A couple items to go over, I'm going to ask for a board attendance roll call. Please state your name for the record.
Jerry Bernstein.
Karen Fitzgerald.
Sarah Pyle.
Patrick Bean.
That's everyone present. Bob is not here tonight, neither is Lisa Heath.
Lisa's coming right now.
Okay. Okay. There are a couple just business matters that I need to go through. Correspondence, we have a letter from Kentucky Mountain stating their operation hours for this year. Start date is the 5th of December until March 28th. And they will be open Monday through Saturday 9 to 9:00. Friday and Saturday 9 to 12:00 a.m. and Sunday 9 to 5:00. So this is entered into record. We require this every year from them.
Are they doing any midnight madness?
Well, it's just till 9:00, till 12:00 a.m.
Okay.
9 to 12:00.
Okay.
Not till 3:00. We also got a correspondence from Kevin Leonard regarding the Hoye property after last time. We've talked about that last meeting. And the question he has is whether we should perform a follow-up inspection of the current site conditions to make sure it's holding up to the rain and whatever weather comes along. I would say yes.
Yes.
And then there is also a letter from Marla Jones about an issue on Curly Road, which I spoke to John Kendall about, or emailed him about today, and he is looking into it. Those are the items in the correspondence folder. Also, we see several letters regarding the cases before us which are entered into record. I'm not going to read them all, about a dozen letters. And I would also like to move to the minutes from last meeting. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes from last time?
Yes.
Yep.
We're done, so we can go over here.
I'd like to hold these because we are missing a couple pieces of information regarding RSA numbers and correct names that need to be revised as they are right now. Were there any other revisions?
There were a couple of clerical errors, but I'm assuming you've got those.
The two Ps in plan.
Yeah, the Ps in planning and then the date for the site walk was, November was omitted.
Okay, so I would move to hold their review and acceptance of these until next time.
Okay. That's fine, I have a couple suggestions you want to hold until next time.
Yeah, because there are a bunch of items.
Yeah.
Okay.
Melissa Shattuck had some clarifications she wanted to make as to the minutes. At the end of the minutes, there captured a little bit of a discussion with her. I don't know if you want her to propose those revisions now, or you want them until the next time.
Is this about which case we'll be hearing first tonight?
Towards the end of the minutes from last time.
Yep.
Captures a little bit of a discussion about her letter of intent and purposes for the arena. And there was a line about, "We've been asking for it for six months," something to that effect. I don't have it in front of me.
But that might be from the set of minutes before, right? This is just a draft from the last meeting. Do you know what date it's in?
No, back for 17, 18.
Around 17.
Oh, yeah. Time. Do you have? Do you have the copy? No, okay. I'm not sure exactly where, what line you're talking about here.
It was towards the end.
Hi, is it the bottom page two?
Discussion believes it's advisable to wait. This is about the site walk.
Yes.
PB Board believes it's advisable to wait on discussing results of the CRC until after the site walk before the site development plan has been conducted.
I don't see any reference to you saying anything.
I don't either. Do you remember exactly what it was?
Well, I don't remember exactly what it said. I don't have the copy in this room. It's fine, maybe I have to look it up.
I mean, if you want to look it and email me, yeah, okay. Yep. Okay, great. So I, just to recap, we've been working on the site development application. I mean, I'm sorry, the subdivision applications, last couple meetings. And last meeting, we closed the public comment. So the subdivision application is now in board deliberations. The site plan application, we did a site walk, and that is yet to be accepted by the board. Now, I first wanted to ask, I know Melissa requested that we reverse the order from the agenda to put the site plan application on first tonight, if that's still something that you're considering. And I just want to say, if, in fact, that's what you want to do, we will need an agreement to extend the subdivision application timeline as the flag is kicking up now.
I don't think that's going to be that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark. Mark, go ahead. Mark on the board. Go ahead.
Okay. So no, the answer is no. You don't want, you want to keep going with the subdivision. Okay. Okay, so. We'll open the hearing for the subdivision continuance. We'd like a roll call for the board. Linda Kuhnhart recuses.
Lisa Heath.
Brad Howell.
Betsy Hardwick.
Karen Fitzgerald.
Sarah Pyle.
Jerry Bernstein.
Chris Bean.
So this is a continuation of the hearing. Case number 20 SDO3, application for subdivision lot one adjustment on the property, tax map, three lots 17 and 18, five lot subdivision, and one lot line adjustment.
Excuse me. This is Jason, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I tried to find the button down at the bottom. Just very briefly, this is Jason Reimers. I represent, I'm filling in for Amy Manzelli tonight, I'm with BCM Environmental and Landlaw. And as you probably know, we represent concerned citizens of Francistown. And we ask that you continue consideration of the subdivision application for one new reason, which is that just yesterday, we received the Concom's concerns and the applicant's statement of use. We had asked for them on November 18th, and then again on November 24th. And after calling the town yesterday, we finally got them. I don't know if it was Thanksgiving or the pandemic that contributed to the delay. But we request time to have a consultant review them. We met this morning with a licensed geologist and an engineer, and they both noted the extreme difficulty of not having an existing conditions plan in order to properly review it. So we request that the subdivision consideration be continued so that we can have time to have that professionally reviewed. We would have done it sooner had we been able to get our hands on those documents. Thank you, and sorry to interrupt.
Well.
At this point?
I think we can continue the hearing and continue to collect information. We can, as a board, decide not to make a decision tonight until, and the applicant does, I think, have, from previous, from the letter that we got from Amy earlier today, stating that she had requested information from the board or from the town that she did not get in a timely fashion, specifically the Concom report.
I just finished it.
Yeah, I get that. But the right-to-know laws, I think, we would be very, because of the right-to-know laws, because of the fact that they would just furnish that information, I don't know. My sense is that we need to give them the right to comment on information that was not in evidence when we closed the public hearing last time. Even though you had stated what you said and what we were given was in writing, it still, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Could be considered by the courts to be additional information. So. Linda's going to be in.
Procedurally, perhaps the board could decide to reopen the public hearing. Yet, once they reopen the public hearing, certain evidence could live the exception. But you wouldn't necessarily have to have a public comment again. You could accept evidence from the applicant and engineer or whatever.
Linda, I can't hear you without a microphone.
Maybe it could be.
Yeah, so what's being said is that the board could vote to reopen the public hearing for the subdivision application, not necessarily the public comment period, but the public hearing itself. Which would then open up the possibility of receiving additional information.
That's, that is one way to go. The other thing is that without opening the public hearing, the board can request information from anybody. We can, we can, and in fact, on my list of questions to ask tonight was to go back to Amy or Amy's stand-in, to ask for clarification on a couple of points. So, yeah, I think.
Well, let's, if we reopen the public hearing, that would be the cleanest.
Yeah.
I just want.
But they, I don't, I gather from what she said in this letter that we received three hours ago, and I haven't had a chance to digest, exactly. This came by electronically to the planning board three hours ago.
Oh, sorry.
So.
It's from Amy Manzelli's team, and it's a, just more information.
But I think we should.
We haven't even had a chance to read it, it just came in late this afternoon.
Right.
What's the date on it?
Today.
Today's date?
Today's date.
Okay, so that's different from the other letter.
Yes, correct.
So I think that's something that needs to get into the public information stream, as well as the comments that.
The Concom.
Concom.
Yeah.
Has made, as well as Jason's, no, it wasn't Jason, who just spoke.
Jason.
Jason.
And when is the 65 days up?
December 20. Right before.
The Tuesday before Christmas? Yeah.
Yep.
I think we're going to need an extension of that 65-day clock anyway. Whether we reopen the public hearing or not, there's a number of issues that I think, we don't even have a final plan yet. We don't, there's a lot of information that I think we still need to get, a lot of discussions we still need to have, so.
Just to clarify, the Shattucks did not agree to the extension of the 65-day deadline.
Okay. Our options, if we don't get an extension of 65-day deadline, are simple. We can deny the application because we don't feel that we've had adequate information to approve it.
Well, we don't have adequate information, and now the plan doesn't show.
Right.
What's required by regulations, so we both, we would have to deny it.
Right.
So I just want to be clear for the record.
Can you use a microphone, please?
Yeah, just.
So I just want to be clear for the record that what the board's saying is, if you, if the applicant does not agree to extending the 65-day limit, the board will retract the application, is that what the board's saying?
Yeah, I'm saying that's one option to the board.
Right. What was said is, there's not sufficient information.
Right.
Information existing, that the board still leaves to make its decision, and that it's not provided that we may, if it's required, which is, then we make the decisions. And I have no decision like that to make.
Right, no, that's correct.
I believe it was being expressed.
If the board has any questions, they're welcome to ask questions to the applicant within the 65-day timeframe.
Yes. I would like to just go through some of the questions, and first, I'd like Betsy to speak about the Concom report. So this is the Concom review to the planning board.
I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm just going to summarize. The applicant needs conservation commission to attend the site walks, and then we met afterwards and discussed what we observed. Notes and recommendations are that the applicant needs an alteration of terrain permit with the proposed subdivision area. Also, according to section 5A4 in the subdivision regulations, subdivision shall identify and give due regard to the preservation and protection of existing features such as trees, scenic points, brooks, stone walls, streams, rock, outrockings, et cetera. It was noted that the plan is deficient in this regard. One, there's a perennial stream on the property that's not identified on the plan. There's an interior stone wall that's not identified. There is part of an aperture on the parcel, at least according to our MRI, that's not been identified in the plan. Additionally, most of the trees within the proposed subdivision area have been cleared along the roadside. This is probably a violation of the state's Basilaria Law, RSA 2227-J. As the land's being subdivided, not converted to agriculture. But anyways, it's hard to tell if the trees are adequately shown on the plan. Purpose of the Basilaria Law is part to preserve the assets of the landscape. Clearly, our subdivision regulations favor the same concept. Restoration of the tree buffer and maintaining an area on the roadside as greenway might help improve the aesthetics of the proposed subdivision that would be more in line with the Basilaria Law and our regulations. Additionally, requiring common driveways and designated building envelopes might be something to consider to help alleviate some of the aesthetic concerns. Also, as we talked about, the stream, Paul Sanseer had mentioned at a meeting, the stream on the property flows down into Sanseer property, crosses its driveway through two culverts. With the clearing that's done and the alteration of the terrain, there are concerns about flooding and washing out of these culverts. Also, Brenner Brook is just beyond the culverts and it flows directly into the Scotty Buck River, a protected river under RSA 483. Presumably, requirements of the alteration of terrain permit will ensure that runoff is managed in such a way that impacts are minimized. In the meantime, the areas should be monitored for problems and doorsteps taken to minimize any impacts. It was also noted at our site walk, the conservation commission's site walk, that while there's silt fences in place around a newly constructed field, there are places where the fence is down, and sediment is washing over it towards the wetlands and stream below. There is a wetland area on the Kuhnhart property located very near the stone wall boundary adjacent to the proposed lot 3-18-4. That's part of the same wetland that follows the stream and goes down to Sanseer since a substantial wetland. The proposed subdivision plan shows setbacks from side bounds, but there are no setbacks shown from the area of wetlands. While we know that the wetlands are not on the applicant's property, the setbacks must still be met. And our regulations require that subdivision plans show all zoning setback lines in effect at the time of the application for subdivision. That's in section 7C1S of the regulations. Commission recommends that a minimum of the need for wetland setbacks from the adjacent properties wetlands area be noted on the plan. It's also obvious from the large, another item, obvious from the log area cleared and stumped, that there must be a lot of stumps buried on site. This can be a problem for unsuspecting future buyers when they attempt to dig a foundation or excavate for certain other uses. State law requires that stumps should be buried at least 75 feet from any drinking water supply, that's RSA 149-M Coleman 4, Roman numeral 22. And Francistown zoning ordinance prohibits burying stumps within 100 feet of wetland. It's felt that to be, to best serve the interests of any future owner and the public, it seems most appropriate to designate on the plan a location where the stump's buried. It was also noted that there's adequate frontage on Stevens Road to allow for future development in the back portion of the property. There are concerns about that due to the large wetland in proximity of Brenner Brook and Scotty Buck River. And finally, the commission would be interested in commenting on an open space development proposal if the planning board pursues that possibility. That's it.
I have a couple questions regarding the subdivision DES, subdivision application.
Sure. Can we comment back?
Sure, yep.
So, can I borrow a copy, please? So, we have the site walk on the 20th. And it looks like on the 27th, there was a site walk performed by the conservation commission, which I brought up, that we weren't received notice. And I guess, in the note, they said it was a publicly noticed reading. The only thing I found was that they posted it on the website, I think that the owner being notified, I think, but, however, all the same, only seven, so we didn't have the meeting. It was brought up, here's my comments, okay, we understood them, they weren't put into a document form, but there they were. Now we got official document on the first, the day of the meeting, and it looks like it was sent out on the 25th. So, when we come to these meetings, and all this information has been saddled for so long, it's kind of hard for us to respond to this. However, I can address many of these comments. The alteration of terrain, we are in a loop, and we can't put an alteration of terrain permit in until we understand what the subdivision's going to be. Exactly, that's it.
So, excuse me, can I just ask, the alteration of terrain permit will be a requirement of subdivision approval?
Right, so you can't put a permit in until we actually have lots.
Since you have a plan.
A speech.
Yeah, got it.
To have a plan. There was mention of some missing items. We had told them that we put them on, we had mentioned to you guys we would put them on the plan, however, that's still also a moot point. Till we get directions, we need to know what we're doing here. Requiring common driveways, just hearing about this, okay, that's their consideration. Stream on the property, yes, we discussed this last time. The weapon on the Kuhnhart property, we're going to allow for the 18 weapons on somebody else's property. If the Kuhnhart's allow us to go on and the 18 weapons on their property, we can then show the proper setback. So, we'll have to ask them if they're willing to let us do that. What's that? Okay, I'll get together with you guys, thank you. Obvious that there's stumps buried on the site. Obvious is an assumption, actually, because the stumps were all off-site. So, to make that statement without having been understanding of what happened there, it could have just simply been asked, there is some stumps that were buried on the property.
There is some, there's some still buried.
As I was saying, we had thought it was observed them being buried.
Or by the right.
There was some buried.
Yes, thank you. Anything else, if you mind.
It was noted that there's a gap in the frontage on Stevens Road to allow for development in the back portion of the property. We don't have any, we don't have any consideration with the back portion of the property. We haven't brought up wanting to do anything with the back of the property, so I don't want to see, why this is mentioned. They would be interested in commenting on open space, okay? We don't know if we have an open space development yet, so. I mean, greatly of all these comments, what I kind of want to get from the board is some direction. We could sit here and talk about comment after comment, but there's really no plan yet, so you tell us what we can do.
Right.
Let me ask you this question, some of the points brought up here, honestly, don't seem all that complicated to provide other sports to. I realize I get them in a lot of notes, but. I don't know, like, not marking material, stone walls, and stuff like that. Immensely complicated, difficult, west, so it's.
No, you need the little clip on. But that's not the mic, it's the.
Yeah, I, you know, I can't comment, I'm going to prepare this for you. But honestly, some of, mostly considerations don't seem that complicated.
I have no problem with any information.
Oh, okay.
I have no problem at all. But I don't have the direction to go in as far as the planning board's considered the application that we have presented, because we want to. Professional subdivision, they said they had some different thoughts. As we agree to have done, the board was going to consider there what they wanted to do. There we are, so that's what I want to know.
But as I understand the process, is that now we're, after taking on public comment, that's over here for now?
Right, right.
I just don't want to spend too much time on the smalls, when the big picture here is, you know, we can get to all that, how that content relates to the subdivision plan. But it's a lot of jibber-jabber, it's getting us nowhere. And you go after meeting after meeting, the time's ticking here. I need to know what I'm doing so that we can then speak to how all these items work to reply.
We understand the process. I don't think it's jibber-jabber, this is the process, there's a lot of information we need. Obviously, this is a contentious application. We want to give everyone a chance to present it. We asked you for a serious look at an open space subdivision, which we don't feel we received at all. And that leaves us like very little leeway in decision-making. So we have your original plan. We've had, we requested that you look at a different configuration, which I would not accept that as an open space plan, concept plan. I'm, as a professional, I've done them myself, and that certainly wouldn't be what I would present.
Well, I asked this director for the board. I was told to read the open space. I wasn't going to use it, but it's by client's time, which is basically, here's where houses can go. So we take a look at the site and say, where could be adequate place for a house with all of these improvements, and this is where it would look like. To get a direction, we could waste a bunch of time on engineering. So I felt that that was very unfit. I didn't get that direction from you last time. It was, oh, this looks good. Well, I have a few comments, but I never received it.
I don't remember everything. It looked good. In fact, I believe, I believe the comments that were made were more like, it's not appropriate. First of all, you showed us a plan that would have meant that the Shaddocks had to give up the riding arena because it's resident, an open space development is residential use only. So I'm sorry, but I don't see how you can defend what you gave us last hearing as an adequate plan, an adequate proposal for an open space development.
Yeah, certainly would...
It was an added part of discussion internally to get the general idea for the layup. What do you think? One of the issues with doing an open space subdivision on a road on that property is the grade, the street is still, you know, perpendicular to the road. But normally, if you're doing an open space, you're trying to get the lots away from the roadway. Well, the issue is, is if you go down on a hill, you're well beyond the maximum breathable roof.
Jerry can't hear apparently.
Yeah.
Is that, is this on?
Yeah, I don't know. Top or...
Is that better?
Say more.
Christopher. Yeah, it's up.
And then tap right into it.
Can you hear me out there?
Yes.
Just to the record, I'm a broker from Land Services. And what was put together was actually probably about the best that could be done with a roadway on that property. Because you have to run parallel with the contour and give the grade of that field going down towards the stream. But what I would say is in a normal, open, big subdivision, you're trying to get the lots and development area away from the public and you were away from the roadway, looks extremely difficult on this piece of property because you'd be well above the maximum roof. I think the existing grades are close to 20%.
Yeah, there's an area to build.
And I think your max road grade, I'm not sure I can look at it, but it's definitely between 80 and 10% for local road.
Right.
So you're almost twice the, you know, the existing grade is almost twice what would be allowed. And if it's not twice, I mean, considerably, you know. The only way somebody could reasonably come up with a roadway design is to go parallel with the existing, which quite frankly is very odd. It doesn't really work well, which is why...
Well, the open space is supposed to conserve open space, not necessarily buffer from the road. So there are a lot of, you know, leeway when you do an open space plan, which I'm sure you've done before. And it's to, you know, maximize the open space, give a little bit more space for houses to cluster closer together, which I don't think the plan that was brought last time considered that in any way. It just looked like...
I mean, if you have any ideas, we're going to open the discussion.
Well, I don't think I'm going to draw the open space plan.
I want to just comment and really reiterate Karen's position on the plan that was submitted with the eight lots. And it seemed to me that, I would have to concur, that that was absolutely the antithesis to the direction we were hoping for, especially after all the comments about where it was located in town and the concern for density and the concern for all of the vegetation that was removed. And I would look for actually open space with less lots than what's proposed, even the conventional way.
And if I could, real quick, can I just get a clarification on something? And I apologize, it's a little hard to hear at times. So with the alteration of terrain, can you explain why you said you guys didn't need a permit on the area that you guys were subdividing? Why you guys didn't need it already?
No, that's Patrick B. He's on the board. He's sitting on this case.
The board likes, should wrap it up for that.
Patrick, in order to file the permit, they need a plan to go to the DES with. So they will need alteration.
This question is, why, if I'm hearing it correctly, saying why or part of it and not all of it? He's questioning the act of political... Right? Am I carrying you correctly?
Correct, yeah. So as I was reading through ENVWQ 1500, it says that you would need to get a permit, and it says that you don't need to get one if you are using it for normal agricultural operations, which I understand. But it says, "normal agricultural operations are not included when you're utilizing it as part of a larger plan of development." So prior to, you know, stumping of trees and moving of land, they really should have got a permit. That's why I'm concerned why a permit was not provided prior to doing that work.
Correct. That is correct.
Jared, when we spoke with DES...
You just take your name.
Jason Villia is attorney for Montchat and the Shattuck. When we spoke with DES about that very issue, DES said, and I'm referring now to the site plan application, these green lines do not exist at this time. It's all one lot right now. It's all one lot being used for agricultural purpose. So at this time, there's no need for an AOT. If the subdivision plan is approved, at that time, we would then take that subdivision plan and put it into the AOT permit and do an AOT permit application at that time. It's a question of timing.
But you argue that all of the land that you are, that is on that plan is part of the subdivision plan. So you're not suggesting that you only need to do the alteration of terrain permit on the four new lots that are that way. The entire plan is your subdivision plan, right? So you're going to be doing...
DES gave us direction on this, that it was just the four lots that were being removed from the agricultural portion of the operation.
And you, okay. And did you get that in writing for us, that opinion in writing for us? I think we asked for that last time.
I've asked for it, the evidence provided.
Okay.
If you would like to call them, I mean...
I did call them. And I talked to Michael Schlescher.
Schlescher.
Schlescher. He said, "I spoke with the engineer for the project's plan, and AOT permit is required for the residential subdivision and also should cover any work after the fact." So that's all I got, whether, he didn't, he didn't specify that it was only for one part.
I can get something then, more.
Yeah, that would be very helpful to clear this up.
Question, so I get this point, that it's actually...
I'm sorry, Brad, could you use a microphone, please?
I guess, I'm sorry.
Use the little clip-on at the end of the wire.
Okay, is that the thing you're going to...
No, no.
See the, see the stuff at the end of the wire, Brad?
Oh, I see.
That's your microphone.
That's the mic.
Oh, that's the mic. Oh, no wonder I think it's on it. I guess my question is, what was the agricultural use of this property? I mean, what was the actual agricultural?
Can I actually make a comment to that? I have the...
Can I just answer this question?
Yeah.
It may answer it.
Well, I just want to...
Okay.
So what was the use of this?
Take that!
For the animals or...
It's the animal.
Yeah, it is. The RSA that is referred to in ENVWQ 1500, which is the alteration of terrain, specifies what agricultural uses and specifically specifies...
I'm not asking what the RSA says, I'm asking...
But they, they're the ones that define what agricultural use is. The agricultural use was...
And I'm asking for this property, or what specific agricultural use did they put it to?
It was for raising horses.
They were only raising horses on it.
There's no grass on it, had to raise horses.
Well, that's, I don't know.
It's granted to us, because that's the purpose of it.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
So I guess that gets to my further question. I mean, are you saying when you cleared the land, your purpose was to be agricultural? But it actually hasn't been done yet? Would that be fair to state?
No, it's not, it's to make the grass go.
What?
Just waiting for the grass to finish growing.
Well, part, on part.
Okay, but that's my question, so.
Not all of it.
But, so you, as, waiting for the grass to grow, as this time, you haven't asked for your animals there, if that's correct. Right? That's my question.
Have you planted the field down where the four lots are going? I didn't see any evidence that that was going in the field.
We haven't, haven't got to that point yet. We can only, we only, got so far with some money in the gap. But keep going with that, so we just did all around the barn. This whole area, we have contested over there.
Yes, Betsy.
So I have the environmental rules in front of me. And in "normal agricultural operations" are exempt. Normal agricultural operations that are customary and necessary to spend agricultural operation does not include personal agricultural activities. Then it defines personal agricultural activity as relating to maintaining livestock, producing corduroy fiber or foreign cotton that are undertaken primarily for personal use. So I have to understand this, that it means normal agricultural, but not personal use agriculture. So I'm not really sure if that is really exempt.
Well, the whole reason we have this type of obligation is because the town said that it was a commercial agricultural deal. That triggered the town saying that you, we needed to do a site plan.
Exactly.
It's also held in...
For the building.
Right. A site plan, not subdivision.
Not necessarily anything else.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, I'd like to just understand this. Kind of, is the intent on clearing that land initially was for creating a pasture, not for subdivision?
Right.
Was he asking, is there a model? Correct.
Correct.
Was it pasture?
Yes, Betsy.
So, the land was bought in August 2019. The intent card was filed in September. The report card was filed in November. The building application was applied for in November. And the surveys were out there according to my information on the plans with January, February. That was a really quick turnaround in your decision to have it as agriculture.
Yeah, sure. We had a lot of kids deciding on the state and living down. So we decided...
The son just got married and had a baby, he wants to have one yesterday. He came to...
And we decided, actually, working on the land, I think it was September. We purchased it in September.
We purchased it in August.
August, okay.
And the intent was filed in September.
Yep.
I, can I, can I ask this, I do have a question. And I, maybe this is a public board members, is there, because I know that, yeah, at least, I don't think there was any call in the public comment or place that I remember for open space development. Is that really still a primary thing on our agenda? And, or can we have some kind of code to see if that's one of the directions we're still want to go in? Or should we move, if not, I think I have a point, if we're not...
Right.
So does it, and then it's really the question then for us would be is, I guess, if whether or not we're going to approve this, if we have enough information to approve what they proposed, and two, would be accepted as proposed or with conditions. I personally, I'm not going to go into whether or not what they, their conceptual plan is sufficient in a sense, but I personally have to say as a board member, I don't quite see that in this, as a great idea or one that...
Brad, can you use a microphone, please?
I thought I was, again, I don't see that as a great alternative in this particular setting. Honestly, the reasons they brought up that's small, I'm not sure. I don't believe that's high quality, if that's the word, environmental land that's not in that area. And that with the issues with respect to the huge sheds. I don't think it would make that much of a difference or it would deal that well with the, you know, impact on historical area. I think, that's my personal view, as of this point. I don't know of other board members, if they feel that if the view is among the majority is that that's not where we're ultimately going to end up. Maybe we could move on to the other area from the majority thinks. Yeah, we really think this is a great possibility here and that one that we could compel their objections. Let's go forth, I mean, let's talk about it. But if not, it seems like, I mean, we may have a point. Maybe we should move on to what's more dramatic, that's what I think.
Other comments on open space development? From the board?
I'm happy, because I was probably the one that brought it up. As I started to say at our last meeting, but we kind of ran out of time, my reason for bringing up the open space development is because of the protection that it affords both the natural, the wetland areas, the sensitive land area, and the historic integrity of the neighborhood. I hear what you are saying about the added expense to the applicant. I hear what you're saying about, about another road, an interior road that's parallel to the exterior road, and what does that buy it? I am, I have to say, disappointed that there wasn't a more creative solution and one that's more, that actually showed that this was going to be an open space development adjacent to a proposed commercial use of the property. Because I think we could have had something that was harmonious with all of the things that we're working on. But primarily why I was pushing the open space development is because of the protection that it afforded to the historic neighborhood and the wetland areas and that sort of thing. I think, as I, I respect the pushback that you guys are giving us, and I think there may, as long as we can respect the land in a conventional development, there may be ways to get benefits that would be available to us with the open space model and put it into a conventional subdivision model. I look at the subdivision regulations, and even though I think the proposal that you guys have presented may need the map of our zoning ordinance, I question whether the intensity of use, these four lots plus the commercial riding arena plus another lot around the corner, that's as intense a land use as anywhere in Francistown and potentially as intense a land use as you can do and still be within the zoning ordinance of the town of Francistown. And it's on a parcel of land that, two-thirds of it are in our only nationally, national historic district neighborhood. So the ways that as a planner, I look at that and using the direction that we get from our ordinance, our master plan, our subdivision regulations, our capital improvement program, I look at ways that we can protect what we love and yet allow for a reason. Because much as it says in the master plan that we want to protect the natural resources, that we need, that the rural quality is important to the town, that, you know, the historic integrity of the town is important. It also says that it's important that we have land available for our kids. So, you know, this is, I would love to figure out a way as a planner to marry these two goals. So I'm concerned that I think a lot of the... So, um, I'm concerned that I think a lot of, of the, um, normally when the planning board looks to do a subdivision, it, it looks at the land prior to anything being done, and it can then say, okay, as long as you keep this hundred-foot of woods, you can put your houses here in a conventional subdivision, and that would be fine. Because you guys did all this work stripped, that we don't know what the original character of the land was, other than what we can remember, or what we see, see that's still existing. If in fact, um, I also, the, the, I want to go back briefly to the intensity of use of this land. As I walked that land, there, there is an existing stone wall, I think there was another existing stone wall that no longer exists, did I, do I have that correct? There was a stone wall that moved, that was taken down, an interior stone wall?
That will be.
Along.
Along.
Yes.
Some of it here.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a beautiful stone wall along the road frontage that, um, left some trees there, but certainly we cleared a good deal of what was there was protection for the, that land. And there's some existing curb cuts. If we could see a subdivision plan that, um, oh, and, and the other thing that concerns me as far as the intensity of use is that we don't have the right wetland setback up from the Coonheart lane. Now, I know we can get that. I, I could support a conventional three lots on, off of, um, that, that utilized existing stone wall cuts, showed stump burial sites, uh, left in place existing stone walls that are in there, um, and, and, and kept the feel of an historic neighborhood. So, I mean, if, it doesn't all have to be exactly 300 feet of frontage, you could have 300, you see what I'm saying? I wa, I want it to look like an historic neighborhood, and I want there to be a, a buffer line along the street so that the neighborhood is protected. We are actually required to do that according to, um, our zoning ordinance. So, and according, and, and, and I would like it to meet what the recommendations to the conservation commission. So, I'm not gonna jump up and down anymore about an open, me personally, I don't know what the rest of the board's gonna be about an open space development, as long as what you present is a, is a conventional development that has protections for the neighborhood and the wetlands areas, and the erosion, and erosion control measures. We've heard from one of the abutters that because of the work that was done on this property, they're getting swamped, and we haven't even seen a rainy season yet happen.
I think he just mentioned that at times it gets, uh, high, and he's worried that with the additional falls that it could have an overflow, I don't think he ever said it's wrong.
Go please, sorry.
Yes, Patrick?
So, I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear.
Oh. Yes, I, I just think that, you know, we do our offering, the train is gonna cover all of that. I believe his concerns weren't that he was getting flooded up now, he's worried that in the future it could be a problem.
So he said he already saw the whole silt thing come through, something. In a, in a small rain, he's had, he had silt all come down, I believe.
Well.
That'll be a first, I've heard that comment.
You're right, I don't actually remember him saying that, but I do know that we did see some evidence of silt in that road. I don't necessarily think it was from your activity, but it could be from the road above or logging operation, but that, it's probably something prior. But that may be what he's, you know, he may have said that and seen that. But has had problems and had rains with it coming up. So, I, I understand the concerns. But I also, I just had a question. Because the plan doesn't, and I really agree with what Sarah said, I, I'm not really in favor of the open space, I don't think that it's going to do, you know, we, if we want to, having a road across, you know, the view and right next to the road, I don't think that's really going to accomplish what we, we are hoping to accomplish. But I had a question, because the plan doesn't show that existing stone wall, how far away is that stone wall from the post?
There's a stone.
It's right in the middle of life.
Okay.
The stone wall that actually, hello?
Stone wall actually cuts down here by the setback line, so it's in no place right here on this plan, though it even impact, Billy.
It's, it's along a property line?
No, it's, it's along a setback line, and, and we could always, if they wanted to see the historical char, character preserved, move that wall to the property line.
And should it be shown on the plan?
Traditionally, the, the, I know the planning board has, you know, when we talk about trying to preserve, protect existing features, that's one of the ways we like to see stone walls protected is by incorporating existing malls into a boundary line.
Right. The 300 feet frontage makes it so you can't do that.
I agree with her on that.
Yeah.
If we could do it and still accomplish what we're trying to do for our kids. I think the stone wall might be something that I would add to the property and have, you know, stone walls in there as well, so.
Mic, microphone, please.
I mean, that would be an, uh, granting the subdivision with conditions, that could be a condition.
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to echo what you said earlier, where it's not up to you to draw the plan, you know, it's not, it's not like somebody comes and says, hey, I want to do a subdivision, you tell me how to do it.
Right.
You know, they propose something, so this is what the shadows are proposing, and like I've said before, you can approve it, you can deny it, or you can grant it with conditions, and, you know, I think.
Or we can ask for another, a different plan, we can ask for an alteration of the plan. You're saying that we can either take this or leave it, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying in the statute where it says, when you have an application, you can approve it, disapprove it, or approve it with conditions. And that, you know, the example of preserving the stone wall, that, that could be a condition, you know, approved with conditions, one could be, you know, the stone wall. Um, I also just want to point out that it seems like people sometimes use the words open space cluster development synonymously, they're, they're, you know, you can have a conventional subdivision in open space, and you can have a cluster development that has open space. So it's not, cluster development and open space aren't the same thing, there's. So again.
May I interrupt you? When, when you hear us say open space, we're actually referring to our ordinance, which is called open space development, which is a cluster development. It used to be a cluster development, but when we're saying open space, we're don't, we're not meaning that it's, that it's a field, we're talking about the open space development model.
You're talking about section five of the zoning ordinance, and what I'm saying is that is different from sections I and O of the subdivision regulations, which also use the term open space and use it in the context of a traditional subdivision. So I'm saying you have subdivision regulation open space, and then you have zone work in section five open space. Those are, are different things. Way to approve it with conditions is you could say, look, we're gonna approve this. One condition is that, you know, under subdivision sections I and O, you have open space specifically, you know, a certain area is, um, kept as open space, or there's a certain buffer, or, you know, and it, I'm just giving you examples for an approval with conditions that would incorporate a lot of the comments that you, you've been saying.
And this being a conversation, this, uh, your.
Brad, can you use the microphone, please?
And not to make it formal, but this is the discussion, a hearing, you could indicate whether or not that may be acceptable.
So, so for example, I think the stone, the, I'm sorry, was it, was it here?
Yeah. Next one over here.
Yeah. Yeah, so everyone seems to be in agreement that preserving that stone wall is an acceptable condition. I believe there's a question.
I'm sorry, I can't remember how big the lot was for this question.
Linda, can you use the microphone, please? Thank you.
Proposed three, eighteen, four.
There, there are probably three, it's a big.
The building in my name.
Hello?
Building. I think it's like, it's very close.
Yeah, I don't have all the numbers in front of me.
My concern, my concern is because the wetland line, that we can delineate yet, the west of North Collin Poppy, of the, of the Collin Poppy, should the wetland line in the setback, and we script that to a buildable item, then can't have that.
We would, we would have to see where the wetlands are and see what this is all for some, but yeah.
Feel like, probably what I need to have in the law.
What, what Lenny just said is because we don't have the wetland setback on lot three, on the proposed lot three, eighteen, four, we don't really know if that lot has to build a belay. We've only shown the building setback, not the hundred-foot wetland setback, because we don't know where the wetlands are on the Coonheart, adjacent Coonheart property three, nineteen.
Once we, uh, don't need the wetland, we'll be able to speak to the buildable.
Yes, right, okay.
Somewhere on here, I have this table.
I'm white.
Oh, yeah, I know. Currently two point three.
The buildable, the buildable acreage is two point three one?
Nope, right here.
Boy, that doesn't seem like it's working on it.
So again, I think that's another acceptable condition, we can say, you know, there's a.
Microphone, please.
All right, we're all together.
I know.
I, I think that would be another acceptable condition, would be that, uh, three, eighteen, four is subject to a, uh, wetland setback. Off the top of my head, I forget if it's fifty feet or a hundred feet.
It will be, but we, you know, that one.
So I, but I think the problem is, we don't want to have the buildable acres and something do that.
Right, so.
So we don't want to have a conditional.
Right, what I would suggest is that we, we actually have, uh, the stone wall mapped, we were just on that plan, having a plan, we were just trying to get some, some way of progress forward to start to the city before we did all these things, but I will get a revised map with the wetlands on the Coonheart property, so I'll have to get permission. I will show that buffer, so we can prove that that has a three acres buildable. We'll show you where the existing stone walls in Salahawar, the tree line, and that we can speak to how those fit into, um, your goals and objectives.
Also, can you please delineate stump dumps?
Yes, yes.
On the property? Um, and, yeah, and I.
We will check.
Um, I also would like to, uh, go back and, and just remind the board and all of us that, from the preamble of our zoning ordinance, that the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to provide health, safety, morals in general for, of the population in the town of Francistown, and in particular to retain its present character of simple rural beauty, to maintain an environment amenable to agriculture and farming activities, to foster development compatible with the carrying capacity of the land, and without unreasonable expenditure of public funds for the provision of municipal services, to encourage high quality of life for all its residents, to conserve the value of buildings and property, and to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. That is like our guiding principle of the zoning ordinance, um, which is a part of what we must consider when we're looking at a subdivision. And to me, I'm gonna go back and say, I think I could support a less intensive, uh, plan for this land that, that was three new lots along Stevens, Pratt, whatever you wanna call Clark Road, um, that, that used the existing stone wall as one of its property bounds, um, and that, uh, that used existing curb, or existing breaks in the stone wall if where possible, and when I walked the frontage, it occurred, I mean, I know you've already got driveway cuts from Gary, but it's a very fairly straight stretch of road right there, I don't think changing your driveway.
The last two lots have to be where they have to be.
What do you mean the lots have to be where they have to be?
The driveways have to be where they have to be on the last two lots because of site requirements. Can't remember where we gauged the lot over the plan, but it was per the direction of the D P W as well, where we placed it.
Those are the only four places in the entire?
No, the last two, the last two lots.
Three and four, yeah. Well, if that becomes one lot, then use one of the other.
We actually also had, you know, from a conventional standpoint, could have achieved seven lots, and we're not even going there, we're, we're doing these four lots. So we've already had the intention of dropping a lot here.
Where were you, you were gonna do seven lots on this plan?
So, we had touched on.
That's the conventional plan, which shows we could have yielded seven lots.
We had touched on this last time, so.
That's with the back, with the, with the front and back lots, is that how you did it, with filling a?
Yeah.
A road into the back area?
So at one point in October, you would ask for, um, a hypothetical cluster development.
Yeah, open space.
And in order to, in order to do that, you have to say, what's the maximum conventional subdivision yield? So in the course of doing that, you do the maximum conventional subdivision yield, which comes up with the four, a fifth, six, seven. So that's the, that's what the max.
Can I, can I see that?
Yeah. This is the max, uh, conventional subdivision.
Well, actually, that, that one won't work, you got front on two lots. So, right here, I mean, two lots, so that right here is one.
Which one?
This one.
That one will work.
You, you have 300 feet on, on either of these roads? This lot, right here?
Yep.
That's 300 feet right there?
That's 300 feet right there, these are 300 feet.
Oh, so this is one lot, not two lots?
Yeah, here's, yeah, this is a hundred, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven, okay.
So that, that, you know, that's what would be intensive would look like.
Seven. So, well, actually, no, that's, I don't, I don't, that is like, super intensive, and also would, is not what you, what you'd have to, in order to do the site, I mean, this is if you weren't, if there was nothing else on the land, like if Melissa hadn't put up a structure. Right now, where her barn is, and where, I mean, where the, um, riding arena is, and where the paddocks, the, the running sheds are, and all of that, you couldn't, you couldn't do this.
You'd have to.
You'd have to take, you'd have to abandon it.
It's still achievable, it's worth the point. I mean, could have actually.
Yeah.
This lot could yield.
I get it, I get that it's concept, and, and let's not argue whether it would work or not, because that's not the point here.
And this, this.
As Betsy will remind me later.
This complies with the subdivision regulations that the people of Francistown voted for.
Yeah, that's how I understand people.
And, but that's not what we're here for tonight. What we're here for tonight is the traditional subdivision with the four new lots and the lot line adjustment there.
Yeah, and I'm just telling you what I can support as a, as one member of the board, the rest of the board may think that four lots, five lots, six lots are perfect.
But you agree that this complies with the subdivision.
I, I, I will tell you, it complies with the math of our ordinance, I do not believe it complies with the spirit of our ordinance.
You know.
And we don't even know if it complies with the math, because we don't know what the side setback is for the wet.
We don't know.
We don't know. It looks to.
Well, is it, is it possible we could ask other board members how they're feeling?
Yes, I would like to. Jerry. I got that. Jerry and Patrick, what's the say?
Yeah, so, I, I am falling more where Sarah is, and I, you know, you're absolutely correct, the math works in terms of the dimensions and the acreage of the lots, but there are other considerations that are important to every member of this town. And, um, you know, we have a master plan that talks about historic resources, we have, We have, we have also the, the, you know, the, the aesthetic buffer of vegetation that has been in that area that also is, is part of that scenic road. And I think that, you know, as, as a member of this planning board, I can't only consider the math because it works. I have to consider the sentiment of the town, the character of the town, the historic resources, the, the water, the erosion, the vegetation, all those things matter. And I'm having a difficult time supporting the density with four lots. And that's my sentiment as one member of the board.
And that's kind of the same thing that I'm, I'm facing too. I mean, obviously, you know, there's, there's always concern, it, it's your land, you guys have gone out there, you purchased it, you want to be able to use it, utilize it the way you guys want. You know, but we also have a responsibility to the town to ensure that we maintain that, that heritage in that, in that, in that field for it. So, you know, as we go through and, and get more information back on the setbacks and get more information back, I think we'll be able to make some better decisions as we move forward.
Lisa, do you have a comment?
I disagree with what it says in state law. I don't hate to be asked.
Lisa can't hear you.
She has nothing to add.
Oh, okay. I can hear that.
I can't comment on that one? Yeah. Linda?
Do you support?
But she's real anxious herself.
I can't hear Linda. Is she speaking?
Yes. Yes, but Mike, Linda, I...
Yeah, thank you.
I wasn't sure. I was just... I, I had heard the vote, I had heard the board remind the applicant to, to change the road footage for the remainder 318 lot to show. Right now, it says it's like 789 feet footage, and we should require the footage to be split part of the road, actually, according to the Stevens Road to be one footage, and the current type should be another footage. The things they're asking is to revise, so that's something that should be done on the...
Sure. I probably don't know the total, but I'll, I'll, I'll...
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
So Sarah, I already talked about this, but I just want, because I think it's really worth saying again. I think what made this particularly troubling probably to not just the board, but to the public is that where you're usually looking at, we get this type of subdivision, we're looking at a wooded lot. Part of it is because it's been cleared, you know, people tend to not like change. I think it's beautiful, it's stunning, not driving away. But it's, you know, it's not what we're used to looking at. We're used to looking at trees, and I mean, they get a pretty nice, a buffer of trees. Right now, we're looking at something that has great tree, but I think it's, it's just kind of shocking. It's different. It's not what we're used to looking at. And I think that's part of what has made this probably difficult.
Well, and also decreases the protection to the, to the neighborhood that would naturally be there if there was less forest.
Makes a great deal when it's a field, but when you put houses in the middle of that field, it's not so pretty. And I think that, that is definitely one of the issues. And that's why maybe the, the buffer, I think, trees or something along the way, it would help. Except the legal area law, that's why it's in place.
I don't know if this is perfect or not.
Brad, can you use a microphone, please? I think we need everybody to use a microphone. Thank you.
Working now. Let me say this, I don't know if this is perfect or not, but maybe. So I think part of the concern is not just the lots, it's also, you know...
You're not here.
Put it right up your mouth.
All right. Part of the concern, I believe, is not just the four lots, it's the overall concept, including the site plan for the riding arena, and, you know, it's... And I, I was, I think that one thing that would make people feel better when you get to that would be to kind of, you know, it's, it's okay, but I mean, it's soft in the books if I have a little better landscaping and planting a few more trees. So certainly, whether you love the barn or don't love the horse barn, it doesn't quite fit the character of the neighborhood. I know I was looking at a lot closest to it, I might want that you could change the bedroom. But it seems like that can be accomplished by landscaping, planting the trees here and there. It seems like a matter of time, that would solve it. It seems like something that may be achievable, and it may actually make your lots more sensible, to be honest, and it may help your goals. I also think that, yeah, I think it may be too bad that what's done has been done, but with respect to the other four lots, but I think your parents could also be improved. And I, we were clearing, it's not terrible in all respects, that is, that open land, that makes the views, but I think the view now looks a bit scarred and gnarly because of its present condition. I think that could be corrected, and I should work with landscaping rather than planting more trees along the side of the road, for example. It seems like that's something that's reasonably achievable, and, you know, and that would count, you know, for test effects, except I could keep less of this. How a historic neighborhood should look like, they have, and how long they live here, and...
Yeah.
Like there's always a difference in those, in the dramatic increase in cost that they get.
Can, can I just interject something here? We've got more Zoom participants than we do room participants, and it's really impossible to hear unless every person in the room holds a mic to their mouth. Thank you.
If you could put that in terms of conditions that would be attached to the approval, you know, and...
Okay, but not the same token here. I mean, they, they, there's really formalistic, and we could say, these are the conditions. But what I thought was, is that one of the complaints is, we have no guidance of which way to go, or what we may be able to do to make this workable. And so I thought, that's one of the things I follow. I mean, you know, it seems like that's not hard to achieve. I thought maybe that's just alluding to something like that.
Yeah.
So, you know, walking down the road, seeing the trees in the trees from Iowa, it's like the street. But in New Hampshire, it's a small town, you expect to see trees. I mean, you can argue about back and forth, whether that's the true historic character. It's been so unremedy, but if it makes people happy and it satisfies people, maybe that will help you get what you're looking for.
But I also want to reiterate that, that, you know, there's a lot of discussion about how we love open fields, and I do. I mean, I think open fields are the prettiest part of, of the area. And when you drive around and you can see over the fields and off to the mountains that surround this town, it's one of the prettiest things that we have available. But fields, house lots are not fields. If you have an open field with no trees on it, and you plant three or four houses on it, it is no longer a field. It is a tract housing development. It's, that's all I'm saying. It looks different. A field is a pretty open space. You talk about open space. A three or four lot house plop, plop is not a field. You can still see the views beyond it, though. I will give you that.
A condition could be certain vegetative buffers in certain areas. And Ron and Melissa, we're planning to put in apple trees as it is. So you could put in conditions that there need to be vegetative buffers in certain areas. You know, for instance, along lot lines.
I'm not sure why you keep bringing up conditions. It sounds to me like you have some agenda.
Well, he wants, he wants to get approval with conditions.
Yeah, I get that, but I'm, I don't think, first of all, they, no, unless you reopen the public hearing. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to answer.
I didn't even hear what he said.
Can we take a question from the panel? The, I was in the middle of something.
Okay, I have a question.
Versus, that's what you were saying, Sarah?
What?
Versus something else?
Yeah, I lost it, Jerry, sorry.
All right.
If, in fact, you flag the wetlands on the Kuhnhart property, and it turns out that the setbacks won't allow for the two buildable acres, will you go to the three lot plan?
Or might this, you can slightly tweak the line, it might not be the significant. Yeah, I'll just point out that this is already 50 feet, so to do another 50 foot is not going to... I, I mean, I'm not a surveyor. I, I don't, but just having looked at a lot of different plans, I, I don't think it's going to really be a significant effect. Also, if you look at kind of the direction of the wetlands, it's not coming right up against 18-4, so I don't even think it's going to push it any different. That's just my, my guide and master there.
And could you show me the yield plan again?
The maximum yield?
Okay, so if, if, with this plan, the subdivision plan, that would not be achievable. Nope, no longer achievable. Is that correct?
Well, we have to, because you can't get a bad lot with a building that's within 100 feet. You don't have enough property along Stevens, so you don't have to...
That's what I'm saying, is that what I am...
This, this configuration actually makes it so we can't get another lot. We actually planned this out, we knew that we could get in a lot, and we'd have a large area control with the riding arena, with the paddocks, the agricultural land, so...
Right.
This configuration will not yield us a lot, although the approval shows that we could have got one more.
I understand that. I think the concern is that that could happen. And I know that that would not be something people would like to see. Even given this...
If somebody bought both lots, I don't even know if they'd be able to do that. I do that for sure.
Now with the current site developments going on there, I don't...
I mean, the proposal is also a lot line adjustment that brings this lot line out like that.
Yeah.
And then you don't, yeah, so what, to get this, I mean, the current lot line is, boom.
Somebody would have to buy more lots to go through the subdivision process again. We're not choosing to, choosing to do that. I mean, this is the way we're proposing.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm, my question.
Trust me, we don't want to do this.
I don't either.
Neither do we.
Okay. I, I have to say that, just to voice my own opinion, I, I agree, I'm not sure, just, just to put it out there, the open space would do what we were hoping it would do, even though I don't think that plan really gave us a really good option to explore it. And I also think that the town needs to, we just need to, you know, uphold that an applicant brings forth a plan that is in agreement with our zoning laws, and that they get a fair hearing. And we're sort of up against the, you know, the fact that there, the plan is showing what our zoning regs allow, and yet we also have some other considerations that we're hearing that we need to take into account. And I don't want to rehash the National Historic Places District, but that is one of the cultural elements that we are charged to think about when we look at these plans. And we can argue for a week and a half about legality of that and what can be done, but that's where we are right now. We also do have, you know, the, the environmental, but really, it's the safety and the welfare and the, the value of the abutting properties that we need to consider when we're looking at these plans. So I think, you know, we have that obligation, but I also feel like the applicant needs to, you know, think about those things as well. And while we, we need you to seriously look at an open space plan, and, you know, no one on this board, I don't think, thought that that was a serious attempt, you kind of leave us with no, nothing else to work with. So I, I'm, I'm leaning towards a reduced lot plan, and I just want to know if that's something you would consider.
I think that we've already lost a lot.
No, you didn't. According to this plan, we're not going to go back to what you could have done. This is the plan in front of us. I don't think we have lost anything.
From a yield standpoint?
No.
We've already made that case for a decision.
I, I would say, according to the application in front of us, this is what we're talking about. You, you didn't come to us with a seven lot plan.
May I also point out, when we're talking about conditions of approval, our application, our subdivision, land subdivision regulations speak of conditions of approval. Excuse me.
Yeah.
I get that, but what I'm talking about, you keep, you keep saying make it a condition of approval, make it a condition of approval, and I just want to read you from our subdivision regulations. The things that we can give a conditional approval for easily. Minor changes, whether or not imposed by the board as a result of a public hearing, compliance with which is administrated, which does not involve discretionary judgment, or conditions which are themselves administrated and involve no discretionary judgment, or conditions with regard to the applicant's possession of permits or approvals, so like the disturbance of terrain permit. All other conditions shall require an additional public hearing with public notice as provided in section, section. So we can't just condition the heck out of this thing and then go forward with no other work. If we, if what you're saying is, where, if what you're trying to do is encourage us to approve a plan that I still don't think is approvable, but with and add all these conditions and just go for it, we can't. Not only do I not think it's possible, I think this board should look at your proposal for... First of all, we should look at the, at the wetland setback. I think we should look at your proposal for landscape buffers, because that's important, with express interest and importance to that, and where the stump bumps are. I don't see how anybody on this board has given you any indication that this plan as presented tonight could just be conditionally approved.
So if we'd asked if you approved the plan, or in the alternative, to approve it with conditions? And I was suggesting, not as a meeting to stick to the statutory process, but when, when people are saying, well, I'd like to see this, or I'd like to see that, it's hard to understand what effect those have. Are those conditions that you're, that you're attaching to the approval? Or is it just an expression of an idea that a person might have? Do you see what I'm saying?
I do.
I'm trying, I'm trying to, when somebody says, well, I'd like to see X, Y, or Z, I'd like to reduce that to a condition attached to the approval. Otherwise, I don't know how we address it or handle it, because the statute says, maybe you approve, you disapprove, or you approve with conditions.
Well, you know, things like after, you know, these hearings are over, we have to make our decision. We'll have to do that, but for the purpose of discussion, and I thought part of this was you wanted to see where, get a feeling, you know, what may work, and whether it's by following a new plan or whether it would permit conditions. But, and I think these are individual board members saying, if you work... But, um, and I think these are individual board members saying where they're coming from. And so I think we can, at this point, get hung up on, are you saying that's a condition or not a condition? It's just things that we may be able to accomplish to make this, that your client gets something that they want. That would be work, that's, that's the point of discussion.
And, yeah.
I actually appreciate our comments. I've actually taken some notes down, uh, from what you've told us before, or our presentation, as far as what you want to see in these lots, but I don't think losing a lot is something we want to do. I think we can make some tasteful modifications, add some information, and come back and please you. I'm hopeful that maybe we could take a break from this, come back with a plan for next meeting for consideration, and then also hopefully we can, um, get onto the site plan application tonight, because I know that this is gonna take a while, too.
Yeah.
So with your direction, yes, the board can make a census that the conventional seems like a better option, and I could come back to the board next month with a plan with some modifications for consideration.
The 15th is our next meeting. Is that gonna be enough time for you?
That's fine.
Okay, because next month will put us beyond our, unless we get an extension, it'll put us beyond our 65 days.
Okay.
Yeah, the 15th party for you, I'm pretty sick.
Okay.
John, you feel that you've gotten enough feedback now, so you have direction at this point?
I know.
Okay.
And I, I have one more thing.
Brad, microphone, please.
All right, the letter from the Conservation Commission is, is, and I asked this to the board and Zanty, whether or not having a shared driveway with Stevens Road is possible. I've actually had that down as one of my notes. I will consider it. I have to also take into consideration the grade and what's allowable.
Okay.
Whether it works to that part. I want to call you, Scott.
Okay, no, all right, well, that's, that's why I bring it up.
Yeah, and John, I, I think if you look at what the, you have a copy of this, right? I, I think if you use this as a guiding principle in your, in your redoing of the plan, that would be helpful to all of us, because I think, so far, I, I know Beth, go ahead.
No, that's okay, it's just one of your.
Yeah.
I just, um, I also mentioned in there, you know, building envelopes. Sometimes that, that's helpful. Usually we recommend that in construction projects, when we're talking about wetlands or steep slopes or something, just so that people are informed when they go to buy the lot, they know where they can build, which is the first purpose that's put in the law in place. It doesn't get in trouble. But I think you might be able to, if you look at it the way it was presented, it was kind of like they're all in the same spot. It might be more aesthetically appealing, and it was like someone further back, someone towards the front, maybe taking wetlands. Just, just a thought.
Yeah, we have the stability provision, like you're going to.
We're willing to.
I have the, uh.
Here we go. I have the building setbacks on there. Um, I can hash here, what's the buildable area. This would be able to get into whatever steep slopes, so I mean, basically, there's none of that within the buildable, within the, uh, setback pocket, so I mean, we really have the, anywhere in there is gonna be up to the home builder, where they decide to actually put the house around the setting system, but the driveway.
Right, so we can require, um, not just the two acre buildable zone, but a particular building envelope that's different from that. The planning board can require that.
Isn't that just for proving purposes?
No, we, we can.
We can actually do it.
Yes.
I mean, this, we're really limited to these pockets of a lot.
Yeah, it needs to be within the buildable acreage, but, but you could have one setback, one closer, you know.
Just, just look at it, see if you.
Develop naturally. But again, three, think three lots, so you can make three lots.
I don't think it loses a lot. I, I really found that hard, um, just because of the.
Understand that there are members of this board that are not going to be able to approve this intense. There, there's a lot of potential here for three, three lots on Stevens Road, but there are, I believe there are members of the board, and I'm just speaking for one of them, who may not be able to approve a four lot subdivision on here. And, and still feel that they're being true to our rules, regulations, and our master plan.
Yes. What's that? Uh, I don't, no.
Not without reopening the public hearing.
What was the question?
Although we allow their attorney to speak, I don't know how we can say, I don't know. They're not the advocate, you're right.
They're not the representative to the advocate.
But you guys have spoken, normally what happens when we close the public hearing is unless we ask a question, there's no comment made from anybody, including the applicant. We've heard from your attorney without asking him a question quite a lot tonight, so that's all I'm saying is that if, I don't want to do anything that's not gonna seem fair when we look back later, so.
So did we talk about reopening the public hearing?
Just for.
We didn't vote on it, though.
We did not.
We did not vote, reopen. But I, I honestly, if.
And we reopened it just for the purpose of receiving documents, right?
Yes.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Yeah, make a motion if that's what you think we have to do.
Well, yes.
Okay.
So the public speaking part, it doesn't want to run our, and, um, the attorney for, we would sit, lots of, lot of certain things. Why don't we say that that would be allowed to do so in the riding, and with that, is that fair? And then do they want, if they can split that, and I don't know if they're allowed to do that or not, but it might be worth shortening it.
We could also, we can also ask a question of Doug.
Jason.
Jason, sorry, I'm getting names in my head that I, and I'm old now, I don't remember anything. And that's, that would not necessitate reopening the public hearing. We could say, do you have any rebuttal for what has been said tonight?
Okay.
Any of the legal arguments that were made tonight, for instance?
Okay.
You want to ask him that question, and that opens it up?
I guess, I, and only.
You don't want to open it up?
I, I'm really worried.
All right.
I, I think we either vote to reopen the meeting, but if we just ask the question, then it's a more tolerable situation.
Yes, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
We should, but I think, you know, maybe we could continue to the next.
Right.
Right.
However.
On the site, we're going to.
Yes, agreed.
Right, I, I think we should move on and continue.
Okay.
To vote to continue?
Move to continue the, the hearing for the subdivision, um, application until.
December 15th.
December 15th at 6:00 PM again? Six, still work for everybody? Okay.
I'll second that.
Bernstein, second. All in favor, let's just do the voice. No, I want to hear your names.
Pete, yes.
Paul, yes.
Hardwood, yes.
Fitzgerald, yes.
Kyle, yes.
Bernstein in favor of?
In favor.
Unanimous. Okay.
I just want to, just want to thank you for being helpful with the promise tonight, and hopefully we'll be able to go to the end of it.
Good.
Thank you.
That'd be great.
Okay, we're going to resume the site plan application hearing. Site plan application hearing case number 20ST02. Continuation of the hearing for the site plan review, tax map, three portions of current lots 17 and 18. And, uh, we will open that hearing. Uh, let's have a board attendance roll call for this hearing.
Bernstein present.
Paul, present.
Hardwood, present.
Fitzgerald, present.
Kyle, present.
Beon, present.
Kuhn, Kuhn Hart recuses. Okay, um, so last, uh, we've not formally accepted the application as complete. Um, we did have a sidewalk on the 22nd.
Third.
Right there.
Say 22, wait.
Which was required, and, um, I want to hear from the CRC chair.
Yes, ma'am. Um, okay, complete review, we held the first complete review on the site plan application on September 30th, um, and found that this, that we were going to recommend to the board that the site was, the site plan, as the nature of the sentence was incomplete, um, the board agreed with us, and I don't get to date that next hearing. Then the applicant, um, in a package dated November 5th, provided a number, a lot of additional details and a revised site plan. The review committee, um, met on Thursday, November 12th to review the additional submission. And, um, there are a number of things that we looked at, uh, I don't think that we need to necessarily get into, but the, um, the application, the two things that we, that the board needs to look at tonight is there are four waiver requests, which we must vote on before we can accept, vote to accept the application as complete, so why don't we start with those? I'm going to summarize what the applicant has, uh, said. But let me just briefly touch on, there was a discussion in this application about the automatic waiver provision of our, uh, site development rights. The, the clearers review committee ruled that the, that this use was not a qualifying use for automatic waivers. In our letter to them, we cited our reasons why, um, that this, uh, we didn't feel that it met the, the automatic waiver requirements. And, but, but the good news is that the applicant in there, additional information, really did, um, supply, or at least some of, at least gave, at least gave us some information on each of the missing items in the, uh, in the, um, application. So the four waivers that they are requesting, some are partial, um, are plan scale, the, the, um, our regulations require a plan scale no smaller than 50 feet per inch. They are requesting a waiver in that in order for the entire use to be shown on one page, as well as they provided us with a, a more detailed close-up view of it. So, um, because of the size of the property, they're requesting that the plan scale be allowed at 80 feet per inch, so that we can see the entire entirety of 318 on one plan. They are also, um, have provided us the close-up of the horse arena, as they call it, the horse arena at a scale of 20 feet per inch. The review committee recommended, recommends that the, um, this waiver be granted. Then I'll make a motion to that effect. Do you want to do all the waivers, or do you want to do the one at a time?
One at a time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, are you taking public comment?
No.
Not yet.
This is our housekeeping.
Right, yeah, we're, right now, we're voting on the waiver requests. So the first waiver request is, uh, to waive the scale requirement of 1 to 50 and accept a plan that is at 1 to 80 in order for them to be able to fit the entire property on one sheet, which they have done. So we need to, to accept that waiver.
Sarah, did you make a motion? No, did anybody?
Beth's seconded, yes.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay. Okay, we need to vote?
Bernstein in favor.
Hardwood, in favor.
Fitzgerald in favor.
Kyle in favor.
In favor.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, waiver request granted.
Okay, next waiver request is for the storm water drainage requirement of our section, uh, 6B to C. The regulation requires that all runoff from roofs, canopies, and paved areas to carryway be an underground drainage system. They're, um, requesting a waiver from that requirement from the roof area and gravel parking areas, which depending on interpretation, may not be relevant, of the side area, to be conveyed via sheet flow and open channels. Drainage on the northern side of the building, including, half of the building is directed to a stone line swale via sheet flow condition on the northeast side of the side area. Runoff from the east and south of the structure in parallel with the accessway is directed to a stone line swale on the east side of the driveway in a fashion similar to roadways runoff. So in, in essence, they're asking for a waiver for underground, um, uh, drainage, because although that's required by our zoning laws, they have, they have, when they were using this just for their own private purposes, installed a drainage system that is, um, that really swells and that sort of thing, so.
Any discussion? Does everyone understand the waiver, Jerry and Patrick?
So is the, the, the drainage only for the, the top part up there? The, the question that I, that I did have, because when we were on the, the sidewalk, you know, right on the, the hill they're going down, was concerned with the, you know, some of the erosion that was happening already with the light rains that we saw.
The drainage, uh, that we have is for previous surfaces being conveyed in underground structures, which would be the roof and the, uh, the parking area. Gravel area around the building.
And Patrick, we're not, um, actually voting at this point on whether to approve the drainage plan. We're voting on whether to allow them to not prepare a plan for an underground drainage system as, as required by our regs, but instead to substitute the above drain system that they, and, and what they presented to us.
Yeah.
This is a very long plan.
So they presented a drainage analysis for the stone line swales. It shows sort of before and after drainage, um, situation using, um.
Interestingly enough, sorry, interrupting, um, one of the things they say is all methods of conveying drainage are in compliance with the current New Hampshire DES Alteration of Terrain Rules. Thought I'd point that out.
Yeah. So I will make motion to accept the waiver.
We could do it just for the purpose, we could grant the waiver for the purposes of hearing. That way, we just have to, once we determine during the hearing that the drainage is okay for us.
Yeah.
We would just have to grant the waiver permanently, but we could grant it for the purposes of hearing now.
Okay. Okay, so motion is to grant the waiver for purposes of hearing for the drainage,
Or we could.
Surface drainage swale.
No, we're waiving the requirement for an underground drainage.
Yes, for the requirement of the underground drainage structure is the, is the motion. For the purposes of hearing, to accept the waiver.
Our, our regs require.
I don't know, but I think she just said the requirement for underground drainage, not the plan.
Plan, the plan. Yeah.
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor? Uh, no, we're not gonna do that. Roll call vote.
Pete in favor.
How old?
Against?
Hardwood in four.
Four.
Hardwood in favor.
Fitzgerald in favor.
Kyle in favor.
Bernstein in favor.
Beon in favor.
Okay. Motion stands.
Oh, okay, the, um, next waiver they're requesting is from section 5F10. Regulations require that a construction proposal, including construction materials, specifications, typical road cross-sections, construction methods. specifications, typical road cross-sections, construction methods, and estimates of full cost improvements to provide, of which the applicant is requesting relief, or which the applicant is requesting relief, I just changed the grammar a little bit in your wording. They're saying strict conformity would pose an unnecessary hardship for the applicant, and a waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intended regulations. The majority of the improvements have been constructed, and there is no benefit to providing this information. The only proposed improvements at this time are four floodlights and a small paved area for ADA parking compliance. The applicant is a, is a professional bi-cumulus asphalt, did I say that right, bi-cumulus? Asphalt, paver, and are well aware of the construction requirements of paved areas and do not need cost estimates. Again, because, because this requirement is normally for a to-be-built site, and we are dealing with a as-built site, I think there's no reason not to grant this waiver, so. I know that we do so.
Second.
I'll vote.
How old's in favor?
Hardwood in favor.
Fitzgerald in favor.
Kyle in favor.
Bernstein in favor.
Bean in favor.
And lastly, they've asked for a waiver for the HIS and SSS mapping, mapping scans for benefit of locating septic systems for soil-based lot sizing due to sanitary septic loading, and the applicant is requesting relief from the regulations as regard to these requirements. Again, strict conformity would be a hardship, and because he has no current or future intention of constructing sanitary waste disposal system on this property. I, I think that may not be something you want in the record, but, but I, I have no problem waiving the requirements for HIS and SSS mapping conservation commission, you probably, you have no issue?
Actually, that's another issue. Conservation commission hasn't weighed in on this.
Okay.
So, I can't speak for the conservation commission.
Okay.
But I don't have any issue.
Right.
It's waived at all, not some provision.
Yeah, so I have no problem. So, I'll moving, we grant that waiver as well.
Second. Vote?
Keith in favor.
How old's in favor?
Hardwood in favor.
Fitzgerald in favor?
Kyle in favor.
Bernstein in favor.
Bean in favor.
Okay, waivers are granted. The next thing, and I believe that the, the letter that Meridian sent us entitled case number 23, dated November 5th, regarding completeness review, on, you'll notice that in each of these areas that we had found deficiencies, they have addressed what we noticed as deficiencies. So, when the completers review committee got back together, we looked at, at what they had said. If they had, if in the completers review committee's opinion, they had adequately addressed or provided the, all the information the board would need, and we considered the application, we have, we would consider that a completed application. There were a couple of things that we noted might need additional information that was not either provided in this letter or shown on the revised plaque, and those two things were existing and proposed landscape buffers and plantings, and a landscape plan, and any utility plan or solid waste disposal, including the disposal of manure or any planned septic. And we just kept septic on the table, even though you guys are not planning to build a septic, because part of what the, the planning board has to consider in our site plan review is adequate facilities. So, we just wanted to be sure that that was still something you didn't think we were saying, oh yeah, we never need to think about septic again, because the board has not weighed in on that yet. But, but given those are provisos, they did address, they, we have some information, maybe not adequate information on all of this, so the board is recommending that the, the committee, sorry, is recommending that the board accept the application as sufficiently complete for the purposes of hearing.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I just said so moved, yes, and so I'm moving that.
And by, by your understanding of that, then, if the board later makes a decision, for example, that they need additional facilities, that we could still require or...
Yes. The board actually couldn't do that anyway. There is a provision, even if we accept it as complete, period, we could still go back and say, you know, we need more information. I just think it's, because there's so much to consider with this application, I think it's better if we, if we, if we accept as complete for the purposes of hearing. It protects all of us.
Yeah, right.
So.
So, that was a motion, second. Let's have a vote.
How old's in favor?
Hardwood in favor.
Fitzgerald in favor?
Kyle in favor.
Bernstein in favor.
Bean in favor.
Little theories on your board.
Yeah.
Okay, so, application soon, is accepted as complete, we may begin. However, you want to?
Right.
Do you want to, do we go through it again, should we have a presentation of it?
Yeah, I also want, do you, Melissa submitted an intended use that I want to read out loud. Do you want to read it, or would you like me to just read it? Okay.
Okay, intended usage for indoor riding arena. Personal use to enjoy our horses in the winter months, as well as inclement weather. Just aside from all this, like, this is, for any of you who have horses, will understand how it works during the off-season. They pretend that they had never learned a thing in their life, and then come spring, act like you play pool for several months. And so, this is a great country for me, in the, in the sense that I don't have to, and my, and me, myself and my others, you don't have to reinvent the wheel every spring. Okay, daily private riding lessons, this includes four to six students per day for one hour of riding instruction. Birthday parties, no more than two per month, usually around 10 participants, no more than two hours, traditionally on a weekend, maybe once a month if that. Summer camps, groups of approximately six to eight kids for approximately four to five weeks out of the summer months. Months and weeks may vary. And then clinics. And experts coming in to teach a group of, interesting, each and for people certain skills, approximately 10 participants, maybe five times a year, more likely less.
Great, thank you. Okay. Would you like to just go through the plan?
Dr. Rutherford, Bordeya, Mike's Services, I'll just do a brief overview of it. I mean, the property properly located at intersection, or just the west of the intersection, Second National Turnpike, Stevens Road.
Good manager, for a second, do you have a copy of this that you could put up, so that we can look at the actual site plan rather than the...
It's up on the screen.
Ah, okay. I just thought it might be helpful for you to be pointing at, but okay.
So, we've opened 2019, the applicant pulled a building permit to construct a riding arena, and unbeknownst to them at the time, here's only where they've acquired a site plan approval for riding arenas, specifically for commercial uses. Came to their attention at some point, I don't know if they also want the planning order, just like we're talking. We're here tonight, and it's, we generally refer to as an apple back permit for the area.
Sorry, can't hear.
The arena's...
Second in my clatter.
But the arena's been constructed, there's a large gravel area around it, they had put some drainage improvements in, in the form of swales, and that's about, about it.
Okay.
The board has any questions, you can answer those.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Does the board have questions and comments, Patrick?
I have a question, and, so you have, it's from there that, I guess, that's all our area, correct?
Yeah, do you have a...
And then, and then going down, there's a...
You're talking here, sir?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is the purpose of that?
It's just so the applicant can drive here, down the lower portion of the field. Or, there's also a paddock down that way as well.
There's an additional arena down below here, is there not?
That's, that's correct, yes.
Okay, that's...
Do you have a, do you have...
So, there's an outdoor riding arena.
Can you, some of the items that we, we asked for in our, in our completeness thing, can you just speak to each of the, you know, show us where the lighting is, show us where, so that the, so that everybody in the room knows what we're doing. Show us where the drainage swales are, and how that water's going to go, and...
So, there's four proposed lights, there's one on each corner of the building, I'll point to it up here, so, here, 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 and here. They're only intended to be on as needed, that many times. They're not going to be on all the time, they're most likely to be on motion detectors. They're just typical three-pronged floodlights. We did show some parking spaces along this side of the building, and up on the northern car. The drainage swales that we were talking about, coming down from the driveway, there's one along the northern side of the parking lot, and as discussed in the waiver request, that takes roughly kind of this portion of the site area, and the swale along the eastern side of the roadway going down takes more or less, you know, from here coming around, and then the rest of the site just eats up. I know there was some concern, somebody mentioned about some rippling occurring, and we can talk about fixing that up. We did add some ADA park, ADA parking space here, that has to be paved, that's required of all commercial properties. I think you also want the doors located, we put them here and here. You do have a solid waste requirement, so it's only one trash or septic hole here. I think there was some additional questions regarding outdoor spandorts and so forth being handled.
Right.
Which we can talk about later, or we can talk about it now as well.
During the site, I had asked that question during the site, and Melissa had, so Melissa might, or you guys could share with, with everybody here now, because I think that's important.
I can answer that.
Laura?
Yeah, we've been starting again, and typically, we just scoop it up, put it in the front, and haul it down to where they mix loom and so forth, then, at that point, they just mix in with loom and sand and so forth, then they move. So, I just keep it a little bit, and then you just take it away, and be rid of it.
Okay. But the storage was from what Melissa told us was across, it's not really shown on this, it's, it's in with the, with the, this just shows the arena site, not the west of the site, and I kind of think of this whole thing, the arena and the turnout sheds, and all of that is your site, so, the site plan review that we're doing, to me, is not just the riding arena, it's also your turning sheds and that kind of stuff. Am I wrong? Are we just doing the, you know, are we doing the facility?
Well, it...
Doesn't that also include where the horses are, and where they're pooping, and...
This is the thing, like, are we, are we, what lot are we talking about?
Yeah.
What's the property we're talking about?
Well, I have some questions, and I, I'm personally, I could come to the sidewalk. But so...
I think it's...
Mike, I think we need the mic to come on, or...
Yeah, that, Doug has it. I don't think that's on. Should be a little light.
And anyway, so, I wasn't there for the sidewalk, so I apologize, but I couldn't hear, but, so, what, what is the interior of the building? Is it just a riding, that's it? I mean, nothing stored in it, no stables, anything like that?
Sand.
Sand? Okay.
A lot of sand.
The other question. That may have already been asked, but, so, for a while, I don't know if you're still there, there's two big tractor trailers, what, what's the purpose of those? They're full of hay? Now, is that the way where you intend to keep your hay going forward, or...
It's, we got a draft this year, so I'm letting my head put in spring, and pass that.
Can you, Melissa?
It would make it an easier, we're thinking about actually painting those, so it doesn't look terrible, and I think that's a big concern that the board has. Probably, probably be crazy, blow hard way, so, just hasn't slowed down long enough this year to, to throw some, you know, just cover that, the milk sign on the side, so.
I actually might be able to get that on.
Okay.
And the other question is then, where would, you know, the camp, the lessons and all that, take place, depending on the time of year? Is it sometimes use this facility, and sometimes use the paddock and the adjacent waters?
Yeah. And the camp, the campers, or the drop-off would be here, and not on the road, because we've heard a lot of, for the camp and the, and the kids taking lessons, or whoever's taking lessons, people, the drop-off parking area is here, and not, not along the road? Yeah, okay.
You got sidetracked a little, I don't know if there's any other considerations one we can...
But, I, I did actually, I just, Packard began, brought it up, but, the area between where the, the arena is and the lower paddock, we did notice on the sidewalk, there are some erosion happening in a couple places. I don't know whether you guys had a storm before, you could put your erosion control measures in or not, but, a lot of that had walked in. I also noticed that even the swale by the front parking area was halfway full, so...
Yeah, there was a little erosion into the northern swale. That's not overly uncommon when you first construct a gravel parking lot, but, I can talk to Ron about, it'll probably wash away on its own down into the rip rack.
Yeah.
Not being issues, but, if it starts getting excessive, like, we can talk to him, and clean it out appropriately. And then the lower area, I think there was some rilling occurring, and I can talk to him, so, some appropriate measures.
That bottom section was planted first in the spring, so we tried to get some grass that we're growing as we kept going, so, we would have some of the area open, so we had that growing first, and then we moved that, we moved uphill, and that was where we grew. And grass started growing, and then cell fence went up, and then, you know, it's been pretty dry, so it's, you know, occasionally, it's, it's green, but I don't know the grass, so, anyway, so that's the reason why that area was out there, and some of the system down from that, so.
Okay.
I have a couple, sorry, I've got a couple of questions.
Yeah, I bet.
Where everyone grow grass and get stable.
Yeah. Are you going to, are you, did you prepare an erosion control plan for them, or are you planning to do any additional?
I can put something together, and it's, definitely when they do these, it's more of a couple of detailed sheets with, this is what we can do as recommendations for certain situations, and we can dispel some things of...
Yeah, I think if you...
I mean, we're going into the winter long term, so, it was, it's what they would consider winter stabilization, but it would probably be helpful for some spring time.
But I also, yeah, I also think that you can look at the, because it's an existing site now, because, you know, we're, this is not, we're planning for the future, you can actually look at the site and see where there are potential issues already. So, I personally think that, that, and we had a very dry year this year, a couple of really ridiculously wet times, but a very dry year this year, which, I get what you're saying about stabilization, but it was a tough year for it, but I do think there's some, there's some problems waiting to happen there, that they're not addressed, with the wetland area below, and then slope is up, that I think we really, we need to see that there are some measures.
Just some very simple measures.
Okay.
Um, I have a couple of questions about, and, and sorry if I missed this, about the intended clinics, and the indoor arenas are usually used in inclement weather, and of course, in the winter, and are you planning on stapling the horses on the arena side, or on your, on the barn side where your house is? or on your, on the barn side where your house is now?
I couldn't hear you very well, Jerry, but I think you're asking for clinics to come and staple horses there? That's what you're asking? No, it, it's like a couple hour event in a really good moment.
Oops, I, I missed that. What did you?
They don't bring their own horses.
What?
They don't bring their own horses.
They don't bring their own horses, yeah. It's, it's generally just like a, like a teaching time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so clinic is not going to be involving, uh, people trailering in their horses for trainer, correct?
You're breaking up there. Are you talking about trailing in and out?
So Jerry, are you asking if the, um, event...
Right. I'm asking if the clinics are going to involve, first of all, I didn't catch how many might attend a clinic, because sometimes they can be pretty large. But are you intending on having others trailer their own horses in or restricting it to the use of your horses only?
Yeah, I mean, remember there's a line only for me for that is concerned, so, no. I just was, it's just a teaching time, right, you know, always. My, just your horses.
Okay.
And did you tell us that, um, your, a portion of your horses live on the site and a number of your horses live on your house site, so?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're gonna be moving them back and forth, oh, across New Hampshire Turnpike?
I do it every day.
I'm sorry, what?
I said I do it every day.
Yeah, okay.
So they don't have assigned housing, in other words, it's where?
It's for the most part, but there's care, there's places nearby my house, so I'd run you over. Do what I need to do there, so, yeah. We get brought on the park occasionally, that's... But the purpose of this would be to eliminate a lot of that, because then I had access right there, right now I don't.
Yeah.
Wait, I'm not sure I get what you just said.
In other words, I could do some of the things, brushing pack and so forth there, that I currently cannot do. So I would not have to cross over.
I see, okay.
Um, I have a question, speaking of winter, would you plow that driveway all the way down to the bottom? Is that your plan?
Oh, okay. Not my plan, I think we should plow down far enough to where we can get to the manure pile on the left-hand side, just come down.
Uh-huh.
Just come down and get into that manure pile. There's no need to go all the way down, because really we'd have, we'd have access to the, the building arena instead of anything else.
You, you don't use that outdoor arena in the winter months anyway, right? So the months below, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, unless you have little snow boots for your horses, okay?
Yeah.
Um, I also, I, all of your application materials say that you're not gonna have any sinks or, but you do have a well that you're proposing on the property. Is that just for a frost free? Is that, what is your plan for?
Yeah, frosty winters.
Okay, so you will have no sinks? You will have no bathrooms?
And so the kids would run across the street?
They can't do it. It's one, yeah, it has to be approved as, with facilities on. They're basically, they're asking for an approval with no bathroom facilities at all?
I, I spend it, I'm planning on going through the sidewalk, I should have proposed like for a porta potty.
Right.
For what?
Porta potty.
Uh, porta potty?
Oh.
During the time, only during the time you're gonna use it, not, not in your own type of...
The porta potty is, is gonna be stuck behind the trailer, so you don't see it.
I should.
Yeah.
That'll be good to show on the plan.
I, I, I gotta say that you said when I need them, but, you know, I, as a former business owner in the town of Francis Towne, I'll tell you, anytime any customer walks in at my door, the first thing they said is, "Do you have a bathroom?" Because they've driven from somewhere, yeah. Um, so I would say that there's, that a porta potty would be the minimum. If you're gonna be a commercial facility, you're gonna have, in my opinion, you're gonna have to have a porta potty on-site with a handwashing, um, capability on-site in order to do any, any intensity of use at all, other than your own family. Because we have to, I mean, I know when you're saying they can run across the street, but the, the, what we have to approve is the facility stand alone. We can't, we can't consider it as unimplemented. So, um, also, I just wanna be sure that on the five uses that you gave us for your intended use for the riding arena, um, one and two, daily private riding, riding, personal use, of course, if you'd stepped to that, we wouldn't be here now. Daily private riding lessons and clinics, I think both, um, fit under the definition of a riding academy, which I have here somewhere to read if anybody questions it. But number three and four, I just wanna be aware that those are not permitted uses in, in Francis Towne. So although we can, can do a site plan review, you will also need to get a special exception prior. Those are special exception uses, camps. And actually, there's, there's nowhere in our zoning ordinance that allows for, um, an event pavilion of any kind or event, um, to me, the closest thing would be recreational, a commercial recreational facility. But I don't know, you'd have to talk to zoning board about whether they would consider a birthday party venue a commercial recreation facility. That may be something you'll need both a variance and a special exception in order to get. So you ain't done with this yet, apparently, so I just wanna, I just wanna be clear that we have, we can only approve as a planning board, your site plan. You will also need additional permissions for uses that are outside of the riding arena, the riding arena definition in the zoning ordinance.
Would the board be willing to conditionally approve the plan pending those two uses? Get the appropriate zoning approvals? I mean, just for those two uses? They don't get those approvals when they can't do it.
Yeah, I mean, obviously all of those.
Yeah, normally, because the zoning approvals are a higher bar than, than the site development, normally people go for special exceptions first.
Right.
But there's nothing in the law that says that we can't give you site plan approval. Four, the, the, four of those uses conditioned upon you getting the zoning board, uh, uh, special exception. It's just that the special exception bar is always considered a, a higher bar. There's quite specific criteria they need to meet, as opposed to the 400 things we ask you to give us.
And, and just speaking of, of conditions, I just also wanted to point out, we, as you know, there's also a subdivision for a more standing.
Oh, that would totally be part of it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You don't have to come back, you know, after.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and running these in tandem is, is, I think, both helpful and awful in, you know, trying to get this, this through, because it's good to know, sometimes it's good to know when you're doing one, but then it's also, I think, holding us up, having to consider, having to split our attention between two things, so. It's good news and bad news.
Yeah.
Is there any other items on the, on the checklist that, that people have questions about?
I don't know about the checklist, but I have a question. Related to the drainage swales, we talked about the, has the silt been sedimented? But I know sometimes those, I suppose drainage swales need some more maintenance. So I don't know if there's some kind of maintenance plan or?
I, I can put something together and we can...
Yeah, just a review and what you do.
It's actually pretty easy. I can, if you could just add some notes.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I think, and honestly, I think some, you know, some planting on the ground would alleviate a lot of these concerns. And I know Melissa mentioned planting some trees in front, um, when we were on the sidewalk. I think that would be helpful.
I, I was gonna say, it's a bigger issue than just some trees.
That's probably the biggest issue.
Yeah, I, we're just dealing with little stuff now. It's maybe the biggest, biggest issue.
Yeah, I, I think as I mentioned before, your driving, um, towards the turnpike because your horse, I mean, is kind of a ride, you know, so kind of not people see that. And so it's somehow, you know, in bounding line, we might consider that better.
Yeah, and...
Right. It's actually bigger than might consider. Our zoning requires that, our, our site, some site development regs require that an adequate buffer be maintained along any property line where a use is different on the other side. So that's Stevens Road, um, I would argue it's also Second and Hampshire Turnpike. And it certainly is any, any land that's gonna be used for residential uses on the... If you were just leaving that field in place, we'd have a different buffer. But I think you're not, you're also gonna have to have a buffer. A buffer strip is designed, is, uh, is, um, defined in our zoning ordinance as a strip of land at least 10 feet wide, densely planted or having equivalent natural growth with shrubs or trees at least four feet high at the time of planting of a type that will form a year-round dense screen at least six feet high within three years. So in order to meet the zoning ordinance, you've got some planning to do. And then our site, subdivision, site development regulations say that, and that's a minimum of 10 feet, say that the planning board shall determine an appropriate buffer. So we can make it bigger or we can suggest types of plantings and that kind of stuff. But in my mind, you're gonna, especially, I think on the whole property, and as I said, I think a buffer on the, on the subdivision will, will help alleviate my historic impact issues. But on this specifically, I think you're gonna have to do a vegetative buffer. I would recommend that the, you work with the members of the conservation commission to come up with the types of trees that are, um, that meet those zoning ordinance and their recommend, recommendations, because there's some, you know, it's, there's some things that you may be able to even transplant elsewhere, I don't wanna, or, do you understand? No, no! But we have a landscape architect and a conservationist right here, so I'll set up about that.
Yeah.
And that's not gonna work.
Melissa?
Well, you know, I, so if you could buffer, I, I'd love to see a landscape plan. I wanna see a row of arborvitae, you know, it needs to be in keeping with the, the area. So if you need a list of plants, we can help you with that. But that would be what we're talking about.
And...
Just curious, where the road is to where this drainage from the front of Stevens Road, we were hoping to just fill that all with apple trees. Is that a possibility or something like that? I was hoping just to kind of fill, to kind of keep natural, or actually we're thinking of putting apple trees.
Right, I remember Lou talking. Well, that's, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and then fill that all with apple trees.
I personally would be in favor, and I think that would help with the runoff. But we'd like to see it on a plan.
And, and maybe if you, um, did some evergreens by the stream and then did the apple trees down the hill, that'd be beautiful. Like, your light, huh?
That's great, I think. I thought you were doing landscaping so well.
Yeah, I mean, you're not going to, you know, you're not gonna screen that building. But I think you can take the, the sort of focus off it.
Yeah.
Uh, which I think is the issue, but...
But I do think up by the, up by the road, you need to consider a, a vegeta, a year-round vegetative buffer. And we need to see a landscape plan that indicates it before we can approve it.
You know, when you go down and enter the driveway, it's kind of that rough, a stone wall is kind of a rough banking. Might be good, as you're coming up Woodbridge Hill Road, you're looking that direction daily. But maybe something along that banking, at least a little ways down the hill, that might help minimize if you have from that direction. And it looks like it blends into that.
On the east side?
Is this the center or are you, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I've got a question about, um, the erosion that, whoops, sorry, Sarah, were you in the middle of talking?
No, you had, you spoke first and then I just kept talking like Brad always tells me.
Um, a couple of questions. One is, uh, the erosion that we observed and some of the, you know, the gullies that were there in the washout, how do we, going forward with, you know, any kind of plan, know if that, we had, I mean, that was apparent after a light rain? So how are we to assess where that's coming from and how severe that is, given that the grass is pretty immature?
Here you are. You guys, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
You guys are gonna dress up with your erosion control plan.
Yes.
Okay.
We're, 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 we're on an erosion control line with the market.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And the second question I had is, um, there's been some questions about manure management. And I'm understanding, and please confirm this, that the manure is gonna be spread and is gonna remain on the property, it's not gonna be hauled off? And that it is also, there's gonna be a manure management plan in keeping with New Hampshire guidelines for manure management? Is that correct?
Oh, I don't really want to see this.
No, 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 I, I didn't, Melissa.
Yeah, I think she just...
Yeah, Melissa meant at the sidewalk, Melissa said it was gonna stand like, no, you said you were hauling it away, so we've got...
I can't, I can't hear Melissa, sorry. I don't know who's talking.
It's, it's gonna be shown on site until we get a manure pile, we can scoop it up and we can haul it away. That was, that was the word.
Right, so is there going to be a manure management plan also submitted?
Yes.
Yeah, that's...
That's, okay, great.
I think the manure management plan will probably...
Great.
Yes, correct. And if your manure management plan simply says, "We will manage manure according to the..." That's a manure management plan, but...
It would have been acceptable to, to that, I don't think.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's so weird the manure store is gonna be on the site plan as well, so that we know what we're looking at when we look in. Well, most of us, I would say, living in Francis Towne, you recognize the manure plot.
Yeah, we, I mean, the concern is the runoff from the manure, as you, as you know. So we don't want all that going down into the wetlands and having a ninety-degree curve.
You know, the other means, I, I keep thinking back to the fact that we're, we are approving a site plan, it's not just the riding arena, it's the riding arena facility. And, and so I would really like to see that close-up page expanded to include the paddock area and the turning sheds and the little, um, house, little horse houses. They're not, they're not really barns, I think they're more like turning sheds. But something like that, something like that. And I also wanted, wanted to just advise you guys that because we're dealing with a site plan application and a subdivision application, one of the provisions of our site plan regulations is that all the activity approved in our site plan approval must happen on one lot. Conditions on the ground right now are it's on two lots under your subdivision application. So I don't know whether we can approve legally a site plan that's on two lots. Our, our regulations specifically say that prior, if it's on two separate lots, they must be consolidated before a lot, a, a site approval can be given. No, there, that, right now, you've got, frankly if I'm wrong, Melissa, but don't you have part of your paddock area on Woodward Hill lot?
That's correct.
Okay.
But is, is that in your regulations?
Yeah. It's in our regulations, you're right, and so we could win it, but, but it's there, I think it's there for a reason and it's pretty strong. Need the wording, you know, unless you give a compelling reason why we shouldn't. To me, I don't know why we're approving something that specifically says it must all be on one lot. Especially since we're right in the middle of playing with the lots and everything.
Right, it's, it's not for all of the...
Yeah, it must, it's like, no, it's a site, it's a site development, like, say, the site development must be created with one lot.
So we can't approve this until the subdivision?
If, if we approve this subdivision as it's proposed, part of her, part of the paddocks, and I believe one of the little barns, is on the Woodward Hill lot, road lot.
Are you moving that? What?
She said at some point, but... I'm just saying it's a... I'm just saying it's something we need to, it flies in the face of what our goals are. I hear you, I hear you. And we may say to you when we get there, "Okay, you have two options." Well, we have three options, we could, we could, because as, as somebody pointed out, it's the regulation. If, if we think it's something that doesn't matter at all, we could waive that. It's not a part of the ordinance, it's part of the regulations. Or, we could say, "We can't approve it, we can't approve the subdivision as, as it's proposed because the site is on two different lots." Or, we could say, "We can't approve the site plan unless you're willing to give up that Woodward Hill Lot and have that incorporated into your corner lot." Right, those are our options. All of our options, not just our options, ours.
Yeah. The other question I have is, because this will be a separate lot, we need to have septic shown, septic area shown as per, yes. Yep, because, because the, this is now its own lot, our regulations dictate that we need, you need to show a septic area.
We have that on our plan.
You do, on the...
Yeah.
So, on the subdivision plan, but is it also shown in the site development plan? Even though you're not planning to put a septic on?
Are we going to show it on the site development plan or are you in that?
Yeah, add that. So, how do we move forward with this one lot, two lot thing?
I think the board needs to determine, I actually, I literally just remembered that this afternoon, and I need to go back and take a look at it, I literally read it, I was like, "Oh, my God, something else we have to do."
Maybe you want to consult the council?
We might see what, what our options would be, but...
So, we still have, before you approve it, you're required by regulations to get approved by the Conservation Commission.
Right.
I don't imagine if we can have a lot other than what we've discussed, right, but it's required. So, we can't through tonight anyways.
Right, well, and we've got a lot out there still that we need to see.
Yeah.
Is there anything, did everybody get a chance to look at the letter? That was the November 5th letter, not the waiver request one, but the one that says, starts case number 20 S B, this letter, in which they explain how they're addressing each of the items that are required or are subdivision... You have read it? So, did anybody feel that there was anything in these explanations or in what we've learned since then that we need additional? Like, for instance, circulation plan, it's shown on the map. I was like, "Okay, that's, that's," I just checked all this stuff off. So, it might be worth each of us sort of just looking at that list to be sure that there's no other questions. Because I would like to get us to the point tonight where we've given them a list of things we need to see on an updated plan, or we've given them a list of additional information that we need so that we don't get bogged down and we forget it.
I think it's really the landscape plan that's...
That's my biggest...
That's really been addressed, but that is probably the major issue. Everything else, I think you can show on the plan that we've talked about. Porta potty location. Show the septic area.
And you might also update the notes to include that there will be a porta potty on site, because we're going to, at least I suspect that's going to be something. Maybe we should, do you want to have a majority vote on what we are going to require? Or do you want to just say, "Yeah, you'll do a porta potty"?
Am I asking you if I want you to do, I don't know?
Yeah.
I mean, anything that can happen, concrete will be...
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I can hear.
Okay, so what, the question is, does, is the maj, we're asking them for, and maybe I should just make, make a list of the things, or we should just make a list of the things. We're asking them for a, an erosion control plan, which includes...
Thank you.
We're clear on what it is, erosion control plan, and a manure management plan, or a statement about manure management. We're asking them for, for a, my mind is blank, help.
Location of the porta potty facilities.
And the statement that you will have a porta potty with sink. Hand-washing sink.
Yep.
On, onsite at all times, that you're doing commercials there.
Landscape plan. They show the septic area. And... They have a drainage, oh, drainage maintenance.
Drainage maintenance plan, the drainage plan is on, is on site.
Maintenance plan.
The maintenance plan, yes. Hold on, there was another one.
Yeah, I think... Those are the items that we just discussed. Jerry and Patrick, do you have any other comments or items to add to this list?
The manure plan, manure management plan was on there too?
Yes, yep. Okay, so, I'm just going to read this again. Erosion control plan. Landscape plan.
Showing adequate buffers, so, you know...
Yep. Manure management plan, porta potty facility location, drainage maintenance plan, and the septic area shown on the plan.
Can I go back and ask one more question about the lighting? The, the, so, the lighting that we saw were just the four corners of the arena. Is there any lighting on the paddock area? Somebody, did I see a porta, at one point when I was invited, I see a portable light generator lighting thing running around? And, and you've abandoned that one that was on the telephone pole, right? That's gone.
Yep.
Okay, and does everybody else feel that the whole site should be on the site plan? Including the paddocks and the...
I definitely do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to, it's a lot of record, and all they've shown us is...
Right.
The, we need to see all the small buildings and all the paddocks and the, and the road, little roadways and where the manure dump is.
It's all part of the...
It's all part of the site develop, the development of that site, so I think it needs to be a more...
Um, I have one other question about lighting, and maybe it's in here somewhere and I have just forgotten. But I know there's the lighting that's specified on the four corners, but I don't know if, was there any lighting in terms of coverage, like, lighting specification, coverage area of entrance?
The building entrance?
Yep.
Do you feel you need that?
Do you have a spec on the light that you're going to use, the floodlights you're going to use on the, if you could get us?
If you can give us specifications about that, just because that's something we should look at.
Just give us a...
And can you, you have...
Well, perfect, yeah.
As long as it's according to the lighting ordinance, so just check, look at the lighting ordinance on our zone, lighting.
All down, it can't go beyond the horizontal, so, down and enough coverage that...
Yeah, there's Lumen's requirements in the zoning ordinance. And there cannot be any light spill onto streets or adjacent properties. So, be sure that what you're buying has a light spill that is appropriate for the size of where you're putting it, which, you know, you're putting them up pretty high. So, you might want to get a narrow enough beam so that you're not shining out into the street or on the adjacent properties, just be careful of your, your angles.
I will contact you before I work.
I won't be able to tell you, you want to look at, you know, your height and your angles, that's, I'm not a lighting expert. Although, I play one on TV apparently. What was the other question?
Jerry.
Oh, so there's going to be no lighting on, on the barn, the, where, up by the, where the horses are hanging out, where the paddocks are, where the turn-in-sed, you have no lighting there at all?
No, not in the plans at this point.
Yeah, but think ahead, because that's part, if in fact we're approving this plan, remember, we're approving this plan, and if you say in a month, "She, we should have put lighting on the barn, and it's not on this plan," someone's going to tell you, "You can't do it." So, so, think, think about what you want.
We'll confer on that, but we do not have any plans.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know, if it were me, I might at least say, "Here are two other possible places we might put lights." And then you don't have to look at us again. Because I know you're sick of us.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the board is all set, yes? Okay. I just want to say that we will confer with council on the lot issue, so, go for it. Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment session. Yes?
Sorry, I can't hear. We need the mic.
So, the question is, will the board require a road impact study? Road, R-O-A-D. Road impact, meaning traffic?
Yeah.
Traffic study?
That is, that is our right to require a traffic impact study. As one member, I honestly, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with the traffic on Stevens Road. Honestly, I think the fact that it was discovered as a cut-through is more impactful than what this is going to be. I don't see need for a traffic impact study, one member. Anybody else?
I don't either.
I didn't hear you.
Does he have? Great.
So, that's a no on the...
I don't think he would.
Right, I mean...
I don't think so either. It's, it's a very involved thing, a traffic impact study.
If they're, again, looking at the intention of the indoor riding arena, if these numbers are indeed what happens, there's, doesn't seem to be that much traffic.
Right.
Well, in fact, this is what she's asked for, so this better be what happens. Because this is going to be on our approval. We're, you know, if she's asked for up to sixteen, well, we're not going to approve that. If she's asked for approximately ten participants in a clinic, that's going to be in our notice of decision. We would, so she can't do forty participants in a clinic with, under the approvals that we're going to be giving. So, that's another thing to think about, Melissa, is make sure that this is in fact what you want.
But, if there are forty, there might be a traffic impact study. Just so you know. Don't, listen.
Yeah.
Did you have a raised hand, was that Jerry? Okay. Jason, okay, Jason, you are on.
All right, thank you, so you opened it up for public comment, I understand.
Yeah.
So, thank you, I'll be brief. As you know, we submitted a November 17th letter and another letter today. And I assume you got the November 17th one. The letters are detailed, so I won't go through everything. In essence, the applicants haven't provided sufficient information that the board could base an approval on. And I understand that you are seeking additional information. So, Amy will probably have some comments at the next hearing based on the revised plan. But let me hit some of the highlights for us. Most significantly, the applicants have not proposed uses that are permitted by right in this district. And I listened to the conversation that you just had, and I agree that some of these uses are not permitted in this location. Though, I say that the board should request that the applicants withdraw their application, seek the proper variances or special, special exceptions from the zoning board, and if they're able to obtain those, to come back to you with a complete application based on a legal use. Right now, without knowing whether the uses are even going to be permitted here, well, they're not permitted, knowing whether they're going to be allowed in another way, you can't continue to consider the site plan application. Without variances, the applicants are seeking site plan review for unlawful uses. And I think it's implicit in your regulations that zoning approvals come before site plan approvals. Section 3 regarding jurisdiction, I think it's implicit there. Moving on though, some of the proposed uses you may consider to be agriculture. But I, based on the document that I saw called Intended Usage for Indoor Riding Area that we just got yesterday, it's not clear that any of these uses are quote-unquote agriculture. Agricultural uses are not automatically permitted, and they're not automatically exempt from municipal regulations. There's been some talk of RSA 2134A, which defines agriculture and agritourism. But that statute doesn't replace your municipal regulations. Francis Town has its own applicable defined uses and prohibitions, and those prohibitions apply, that statute doesn't override that.
Can I interrupt you for one minute?
Yes.
If we get to your in error, if you kind of know that Amy's letter was incorrect in saying that all of these proposed uses require a variant. According to our ordinance, and if I direct you to the table at the end of the zoning ordinance, riding stables and riding academies are permitted subject to site plan review. Camps and recreational facilities are permitted by special exception. So, those are, those are two, I agree with you that there are additional legal requirements for two of the five proposed uses. But here's the definition on our zoning ordinance of stables and riding committees, a path academy, which according to our zoning is a permitted use. An area of land including structures thereon that is used for the shelter care and feeding of domestic animals, and which may include the teaching of skills related to such animals, and/or the hiring out of horses for unsupervised ring or trail riding. That is, stables and riding academies, that is what they've asked for, site plan review. Four and three of the five intended uses they're stating fall under that definition in my mind.
Understood that, that's your interpretation of that, thank you. The historic district protections, those are applicable to the subdivision application and the site plan application. Under that, a use cannot interfere with adjacent properties, and this proposed use would interfere with the adjacent properties in the historic district. And the applicants must identify and give due regard to the preservation and protection of existing stone walls and historic landmarks, and this application does not. And I also agree with you that this being two separate lots, there's been no good reason given to grant a waiver that this should not be approved. And I'm happy to hear that you're going to consult with your council. I understand that our letter today was submitted only a few hours ago. And I'll reiterate the request, and I think it's clear that you're going to continue your consideration of this site plan application. So, please give that letter a careful read. And like I said, I expect that Amy will have some comments at the next public hearing based on the revised plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Anyone on to, no? Uh, yes, Linda.
Microphone, please.
Linda, state your name.
It's just all CNO, can't remember that part.
Sorry, I have a problem with the revised plan. So, on the, if you're going to submit a revised plan, what's it called, SP1 now? So, on SP1 now, at the moment, there's no reason why you can't approve the current plan. Under the records plan, you're referencing the lot line adjustment and subdivision plans of one of Melissa, HACMP3, Lot 17, and you think it's going to be four. The number four thing hasn't passed yet, I mean, oh.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying. Well, what...
It's common nature for a reference for the individual team folk, and we had done that plan, essentially, with the site plan.
I understand. It's just, it's problematic to me because it's not recorded, so it gets the sketch. So if we simply called it a sketch, I probably could have said anything, but you're calling it a plan, nevermind. The only other, the only other thing again, it's talking about the revised plan. So on that same sheet, SP1, it shows a stone wall that goes all the way down but in fact, in our sidewalk, it, it just, it's gone. I don't, I don't know if one of us think where the person that approved the plan is different from the guy that's done the children with.
It's the time that we looked into the information, what we were showing about the case of fraud.
I'm sorry.
Something has changed since then, that you can update our plan to show that.
Yeah, so just, I would, I, I guess you need to figure out how you want to show where this stone wall is. But it doesn't, it definitely does not go on Stevens Road.
Thank you. Uh, we raised hand on Zoom? Hang on.
Um, this is Greg Neely. We're, are you addressing me, Karen?
Yes.
Um, I just have a, a question before I want to make a point tonight. So if this is likely to be continued, do you guys want to hear all our comments tonight? Or will there be another public comment period if this meeting, or if this, um, proposal is continued to a future meeting?
Yeah, I mean, otherwise we're just gonna have to reopen it again because we're gonna learn more information between now and then.
Okay.
We're gonna continue it. I think we can continue the public hearing. Yeah.
Can't hear you, Brad.
Of the subdivision. We're now, yeah. This is the site, different hearings. Remember when you went out and came back here?
Yeah. So Greg, we're gonna continue the hearing. It'll still be open next, on the 15th.
Well, I'll last, I mean, I don't want to drag this on. I'll leave it up to you all. Do you want to hear, I have major concerns about this particular proposal. Should I hold them until next meeting, or how do you guys want to proceed?
A few.
Okay.
Yeah. It's nine o'clock.
So why don't we say that we'll start, um, you know, when you want to start next, the next session with, I think, with the public comments? And then we'll get to the presentation of the new plan.
All right, I have a suggestion. You can put them on writing.
No, I don't, yeah. I actually prefer that they're made in public sector. I think it's more open to everybody hearing each other's remarks. And that's part of why we have a public hearing. The, the letters to us are great and they go in the file and we all read them. But it's not the same as being heard in a public forum.
Yeah. So can we take this question from the audience?
Yeah, yeah.
So Greg, so you do, are you okay with?
I'll hold my comments. I don't want to delay us anymore tonight. If I can speak next meeting, great.
Okay, sounds good. Yes.
Cannot hear. Can't hear. Sorry.
Use the mic.
Who's saying what? Okay. I'm a little confused as to the basis for what the, how this building was granted for destruction. As I understand it, the Shaddix have not obtained occupancy, you have not been able to use the building, you are very incorrect.
Can, can I, my understanding is, and I may be wrong, but my understanding is that you guys first built this as, you first applied for the building permit as a, as a private, you were gonna, private use arena.
No, my intention was always the same. My, what, what we were confused about basically just a misunderstanding between how it's presented and the choice made was, um, we, I, I assume, I guess, I'll take my word of belief that I was in home business if I qualified for personal use versus a commercial. Does that make sense? So we got a building permit based on this.
Right. So the building permit was given based on an assumption that it was a accessory to a business, but it brought, it was brought to our attention after the building permit was already, uh, granted. So this is where we are.
Okay, because apparently at one point, our building inspector wanted to have access to the structure and that was not granted. And then it ended up ending up with the Shaddix lawyers versus.
I don't think it helps any of us, David, to have an apparently thing. I don't think it helps any of us to have apparently stories. If you have a specific.
Well, I have a special question.
All right.
I'm just trying to understand the basis as to from start to where we are now. And how did, how, what was the current?
I might direct that question to the building inspector then, because he has direct knowledge of how it got to us as an application.
Or we can tell you that.
Well, I'd direct it to the selectman, that they ran the building first.
Okay.
I can tell you that. So if you want to know.
Microphone, please, Brad.
John Kendall signed the building permit and then he, um, realized that, you know, there was a misunderstanding, helped it that way. And that, and he came to the selectman and we, based on the town ordinance, it was his decision. And based on the town ordinance, we sent the appeal to the Shaddix, which is the DEA. Is there a line in the ordinance to read that way? And he did take it to the DEA and side over to determine that, no, it's not supposed to be here. Right? I think that's what happened. And then ultimately, um, I think what he said, or I mean, I don't know exactly, but the essence of it was is that this really had to go, whether it was, uh, the question before him, did it have to go for a site review? And he said that was a question, I believe, that had to go to the planning board before. And then ultimately, I think the Shaddix had some confusion about it, some of his agreement, but they ultimately decided they would, and that's why they're here. Right? Is that moral as actor, Melissa? So I, I think that's a long and short of it. And so, um, here we are now in the proper place reviewing their, um, site application.
Thank you, Brad.
Okay, I think we are going to continue this.
Motion to continue both the public hearing on the site development application and the public, uh, and the public hearing on the subdivision application, even though the public hearing portion of that subdivision application has been closed. So that's my motion.
Second. Fitzgerald in favor.
Kyle in favor.
Bernstein in favor.
Ian in favor.
Bernstein? Hey, you can answer. December 15th. Six o'clock.